Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order our regular city council meeting for March 18th, 2025. Glad to see everyone here. I see a lot of color. I love it. I love it. And please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for the liberty and best of all.
Madam Clerk, can you do rule call, please?
Councilmember Brando Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Melissa Lamatina.
Here.
Councilmember David Oro.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mark Joseph.
Here.
Mayor Pierre Washington.
I'm here. Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you.
Report on closed session, Mr. Ross.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, the council convened and opened at 4:00 PM, and after ascertaining, there were no comments on the matters agendized for closed session consideration adjourned to closed session at 4:00 PM. You concluded at 6:16 PM. I will do a written report upon return from closed session, consistent with the provisions of Government Code, Section 5497.1B. That would conclude the report unless there are questions.
Any questions from council?
Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Ross. And moving forward on to proclamations and presentation tonight, we have one proclamation and we have one presentation. Do we have someone to receive the proclamation for acknowledging holy? Arvin?
Well, I'm gonna read the proclamation first and then... Oh, you can stay at the podium. You can still stay at the podium. I'll read the proclamation. You got everybody looking, you know, colorful tonight, so thank you.
I put the color on you.
I know. I know you're gonna get me. So, reading the proclamation, City of American Canyon proclamation acknowledging holy, March 14th, 2025. Whereas the City of American Canyon recognizes and celebrates the diversity and of the residents and richness of their culture tradition. And whereas holy refers wholly the festival of colors is an ancient Hindu festival celebrated annually to mark the arrival of spring and the triumph of good over evil. And whereas holy is a time of joy, merriment, and community where people come together to celebrate with vibrant colors, music, dance, and delicious traditional foods. And whereas the celebration of holy promotes unity, inclusiveness, and cultural exchange, fostering greater understanding and appreciation among individuals of different backgrounds. And whereas it is important to honor and respect the culture, cultural heritage of all residents of American Canyon, recognizing the significance of festivals such as holy in our shared community life. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Pierre Washington, Mayor of American Canyon, on behalf of the American Canyon City Council, do hereby recognize holy and its significance to our community. While holy was observed on Friday, March 14th, this year, its spirit and tradition extends beyond that day itself. I encourage all residents to join in in celebrating this joyous occasion at the holy festival at Shenandoah Park on Sunday, April 6th, 2025, from 2:00 PM to 5:00 PM, where we will embrace the spirit of holy through joy, renewal, and togetherness.
A few words, Arvin?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers and city officials. I really appreciate this event you are celebrating in American Canyon. It's not a new event. We are celebrating from last 16 years in town, and no other city has celebrated like that. So only this city, we have started in a long time ago with the help of Brent Cooper. He's sitting there, and we joined together this one in the Gadwell Park. So since that time, we are celebrating. Mark Joseph is there all the time and to help this event. And this event is celebrated all over the world, not only in American Canyon or America. Everybody celebrate this holy festival. It's a festival of colors. We love each other. There's no any hate. There's no any crime. We respect each other. That's what we are celebrating holy. You put color on my face, I put color on your face, so it's a friendship. There's no any gratitude in your mind, you know, okay, I don't like him, I don't like him. No, it's not like that. That's why we have so many friends, and we love to enjoy this event. And every Indian events, we must have food to celebrate. If you have no food, they say, okay, it's all right. So we try to do it, and even if you go to the temple or to Gurudwara or any place, after the prayer or after the event, there's a food available and no cost to anybody. It's free. So I'm grateful to city and to the council member and Ellie, and she helped me a lot to have this event. So, thank you very much being here. So, my wife is here. So my friends are here, my son is here, my grandson is here, and Ellie is here to celebrate this one. Come on, come on. So we all came here to celebrate and to thanks to the council and to the city that we are celebrating this event in town. So we all here to celebrate this event. Thank you very much. Do you want to say something? Just say.
Okay. Well, you have explained very well, actually. You have explained more than enough to everybody know what is holy is about. And definitely, this is a beginning of spring. Even the God has bring so many colors into the nature. You can see green grass, lot of flowers, and all the colors are there. So we want to celebrate with our mother nature, and we want to play the colors and show everybody that we are together. Thank you.
Can I say something?
My grandson.
Hi, everyone. My name's Ayan. I just wanna say, Arvin, my grandpa, he is such an amazing person. I know everyone, every one of y'all know him. He's such an amazing person. He helped me so much. He still helps me. He's going to help me. Everything that I go through, he helps me. He's there for me. He's such a good person, and he does so much for the city, and I just wanna make sure he's appreciated, and I wanna make sure y'all appreciate him as much as I appreciate him.
Just so you know, your grandpa is appreciated. We love him. So we wanna take a picture with you as well when I give you this proclamation.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and city staff. I feel quite honored to follow that proclamation and celebrate with all of you. I'm Michelle Grippi. I'm the Director of the Community Leaders Coalition, and the Community Leaders Coalition was founded following the 2016 election as a grassroots initiative to address growing concerns within Napa County, particularly regarding BIPOC, LGBTQ+ and immigrant populations. The CLC is a collaborative space for community leaders to engage in advocacy and collective problem solving. Our vision remains the same as when we first came together back in 2017, fostering a community that is inclusive, equitable, and vibrant, prioritizing trust, safety, health, education, and empowerment as shared responsibilities. To address the concerns that have been coming about as a result of the second Trump administration, the Community Leaders Coalition is a founding member of the Napa Valley Together Allies for Immigrants Collaborative. This initiative is dedicated to supporting immigrant families by providing accurate information, legal services, and advocacy to help immigrants understand their rights and access critical support. The Napa Valley Together partners are well suited to do this work. This is not our first rodeo. We've been through this before, and we have worked together on other successful efforts in the community around voter engagement, census outreach, vaccine outreach, and language access advocacy. As we prepare for the challenges ahead, we need the leaders of Napa County's cities and county to stand alongside of us. So I'm here tonight to request support from the city council to issue a statement of support for our immigrant BIPOC and LGBTQ+ residents. In 2017, the county and all the cities in the town of Yountville issued statements of support for our immigrant community in partnership with the Community Leaders Coalition and many of the other Napa Valley Together partners. As you are aware, Napa County is home to a diverse population of approximately 137,000 people, with 35% identifying as Latinee and 22 as foreign-born immigrants. Immigrants constitute a significant portion of Napa County's workforce, making up 33% of the workforce and nearly 75% of the workers in the wine and vineyard industries. More than half of our school-aged children are children of immigrants, yet only 61% of Latinee residents earn a living wage compared to 84% of their white peers, and many immigrant families face uncertainty due to the ever-changing policy landscape. This is why our local leadership must take a stand. The rich cultural diversity brought by immigrant BIPOC and LGBTQ+ communities enhances Napa County's appeal as a vibrant and inclusive destination, attracting tourists and fostering economic growth. So a formal statement reinforces the city's commitment to creating an inclusive environment where all residents feel valued and supported. It supports communities. Supporting these communities ensures the continued contribution of a diverse workforce essential to key economic sectors, including agriculture, hospitality, and tourism. And recognizing and supporting marginalized communities aligns with local public health initiatives aimed at improving access to services and our overall community well-being. To date, the Board of Supervisors, the City of Calistoga, the City of St. Helena, Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Trustees, Napa Valley College Trustees, and local law enforcement leaders have all made a statement in support of these communities. I presented to Napa's city council on March 4th, and they are drafting a statement, as is the town of Yountville. The American Canyon City Council has an opportunity to reinforce these values by issuing a statement of support for our immigrant BIPOC and LGBTQ+ communities, ensuring that Napa County remains a place where all residents feel safe, valued, and supported. Beyond a statement of support, we urge the city to partner with us in promoting Napa Valley Together's efforts, ensuring immigrant residents have the resources and protections they need. Fear, family separation, and uncertainty impact the stability of our entire community, and your leadership can help mitigate these harms and reaffirm the American Canyon and the larger Napa County as a community where everyone belongs. I'll just say a little bit more about Napa Valley Together Allies for Immigrants. In addition to the Community Leaders Coalition, it also includes International Immigration Institute of the Bay Area, Up Valley Family Centers, Puerto Sabiartes, and On the Move, which has a family resource center here in American Canyon. We have been working since November to put together a one-stop-shop, if you will, website. I had sent, it just came hot off the presses today, and I sent it to Jason Holly that gives a little bit of an explanation as to some of the services and the ways in which we're trying to work together to really support our community. So we're doing a lot of Know Your Rights campaign, or Know Your Rights trainings, family preparedness plans for families that are here, also doing a lot of employer trainings, Know Your Rights and what to do if immigration enforcement comes to your place of business, as well as sharing lots of different resources as they become available from other immigration collaboratives across the state and across the country. So that's napavalleytogether.org. So I wanna just, if you have any questions, I'm happy to do my best to answer them for you, and I thank you for your time and consideration.
Well, thank you for that very important presentation, and then also being the first person to present and display the holy colors for us tonight.
Yes. I was very happily surprised when I came in. And again, this feels very appropriate request, given the proclamation and American Canyon being such a diverse city.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Hearing none, but again, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
At this time, I'd like to go to open public comment for any items.
If I may interrupt, I know our previous proclamation, they brought some refreshments and some treats for us outside, and I know they'd like to...
Oh, you wanna take a recess to engage?
I'd suggest that if you don't mind.
Sounds like someone has a sweet tooth.
We don't want the cake to get stale.
Sounds like someone has a sweet tooth.
If we got maybe five minutes or 10 minutes, they would...
We'll do a five, 10-minute recess to enjoy some of the refreshments that Arvin and his family has provided for us outside. Sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Go. Hulk. That's probably a little bit more than five minutes. So I'll call our session back in order, and then we'll move on to the part of the agenda for open public comment for items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if you have a topic you wanna bring up that's not on our agenda, you have three minutes. Madam Clerk, do we have any...
We do. I'm just restarting my program really quickly. Yeah, we're gonna shut that door. Okay. Yes. TCO. Okay. I do have comments for non-agenda items. I'm gonna call Rhonda Zuniga. And also, just a reminder, please speak directly into the microphone. Use a little bit louder voice than you normally would. Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Rhonda.
Hi. Well, my name is Rhonda Zuniga, and I have been working with a nonprofit called Incredible Blessings for You here in American Canyon. We are a pretty new organization, less than a year old, and I'm coming to you, councilmembers and people on the board, to ask for a little bit of help. Because we are such a new nonprofit... Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
At this time, I'd like to go to open public comments for any items.
Mayor, if I may interrupt, I know our previous proclamation, they brought some refreshments and some treats for us outside, and I know they'd like to...
Oh, you wanna take a recess to engage?
I'd suggest that if you don't mind.
Sounds like someone has a sweet tooth.
We don't want the cake to get stale.
Sounds like someone has a sweet tooth.
If we got maybe five minutes or 10 minutes, they would...
We'll do a five, 10-minute recess to enjoy some of the refreshments that Arvin and his family has provided for us outside. Sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Go. Hulk. That's probably a little bit more than five minutes. So I'll call our session back in order, and then we'll move on to the part of the agenda for open public comment for items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if you have a topic you wanna bring up that's not on our agenda, you have three minutes. Madam Clerk, do we have any...
We do. I'm just restarting my program really quickly. Yeah, we're gonna shut that door. Okay. Yes. TCO. Okay. I do have comments for non-agenda items. I'm gonna call Rhonda Zuniga. And also, just a reminder, please speak directly into the microphone. Use a little bit louder voice than you normally would. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Rhonda.
Hi. Well, my name is Rhonda Zuniga, and I have been working with a nonprofit called Incredible Blessings for You here in American Canyon. We are a pretty new organization, less than a year old, and I'm coming to you, councilmembers and people on the board, to ask for a little bit of help. Because we are such a new nonprofit...
Two, three. That's probably a little bit more than five minutes. So I'll call our session back in order. And then we'll move on to the part of the agenda for open public comment for items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if you have a topic you want to bring up that's not on our agenda, you have three minutes. Madam Clerk, do we have any?
We do. I'm just restarting my program really quickly. And yeah, we're gonna shut that door. Okay. Uh, yes. Okay. I do have comments for non-agenda items. I'm gonna call Rhonda Zuniga. And also just a reminder, please speak directly into the microphone. Use a little bit louder voice than you normally would. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Rhonda.
Hi. Well, my name is Rhonda Zuniga. And I have been working with a nonprofit called Incredible Blessings For You here in American Canyon. We are a pretty new organization, less than a year old. And I'm coming to you, council members and people on the board, to ask for a little bit of help. Because we are such a new nonprofit, we are looking for a place for storage. What we are is, we hand out food to people who need it. We have perishables, non-perishables. We have an account with the Napa Valley Food Bank. And we have been pretty much supplying all of American Canyon on our side of the highway. So our numbers, we started probably a few months ago at two different locations here in American Canyon. We're at 489 Canyon Creek, which we do food distribution every second and fourth Wednesday of the month from two to five. And then we are also, on the third Wednesday of the month, we are on 2525 Flosden Road, which we are also there from two to five. Our numbers have grown immensely. When I first started, we had maybe twenty-five, thirty people come to the forty-nine distribution. Just last Wednesday, I had about sixty individuals. So when we put all the numbers together for both locations, there is nine-hundred-and-sixty-one families and two-thousand-three-hundred-and-fourteen individuals that we are serving for those three locations here in American Canyon. And the need is, seems to be growing every single time that we're doing our distributions. And because we are such a new nonprofit, and we're our director has been doing it for years, but we're new to American Canyon, like our nonprofit is new to this side. So we just need a little help from American Canyon, finding a place where we can store some of our inventory. Because we have donors out there who are willing to give us more inventory so we're able to supply more to our community, but we don't really have a place to store it in order to take on these things. And then, of course, funding. Because we are fairly new, we haven't received any grants or anything like that. We're kind of doing it out of our own pockets. So every time we go to the food bank, we're not doing it with donations. We're doing it from, you know, everybody on the boards. Their paychecks are going to help supply these families so that nobody goes hungry. My thought has always been, food is not a privilege, it's a necessity. Everybody deserves to eat. My three minutes are up?
Yes, you are. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you.
I have, oh, where are they? Sorry, hold on a moment. Where's the? Where did they go? Sorry, let me see here. Where did they go? Okay. To them, but that was Rhonda. Yvonne Beginsky.
Good morning, city council member. Good morning, good evening, city council members and mayor. It's been a long day. I'm here to do a couple of wins for you before this meeting gets started. At the last meeting I was at, the Gia Venoni Project Buzz Oats people were here. And as we were leaving, they were yelling across the parking lot at me, "Yvonne, why didn't you tell them about what we're doing?" So I'm here to remind you that Gia Venoni has promised to plant native plants in their landscaping, including pollinator plants when they do their build-out. And they introduced me to their landscaping person, and I also gave her a complete plant list and a complete tree list. And they're going to integrate plants that are native to this region into their landscaping. So that's a win. And I know I've been standing here and saying, please, let's add these plants to our local, to our, to our city list. And they went ahead and decided to move forward with that anyway. I also want to give you another win. I have been up here bragging about those butterflies that no one else sees but me on the wetlands edge. Oh, best season. Thank you, thank you. So I have reported, I worked with the Zeris Society, and it's taken me almost a full year. But they have put that corner of the eucalyptus trees on their watch list. And they'll be watching that area for three years to see if those monarch butterflies return. But they were there in February of 2024. I haven't seen them since, but the president of the Audubon Society told me he saw them as well. And so what I did was, we did a map and we circled the area where those butterflies are. And they're going to put that on their watch list. The nearest overwintering butterfly place right now is at Mare Island, and that's seven miles south. So it's totally feasible that we had overwintering butterflies up here. And the third thing I'm going to say, and I'm going to put on my Audubon Society hat, is there have been sightings of two pairs of bald eagles off the wetlands edge. And there's also been sightings of loggerhead strikes, which is an extremely rare bird. And they thought was extricated in this area. And we've also seen some northern harriers and some Brian Savannah sparrows. And the reason why I'm bringing up these particular birds is these are special status birds and very rarely seen. And they're showing up in the American Canyon wetlands. And I think that's something you should all know about. So thank you.
Thank you, Yvonne.
Karen Fritz.
Karen Fritz, good evening, everyone. I feel kind of bad after all that good news. Anyway, I just wanted to ask why there is no signage in Gadwall Park in particular about your pets needing to be leashed. There's, you know, pretty often I run into folks that have their dogs, and not all of, not all of them are the nicest. Anyway, that's one thing. And then the other item that I just remembered earlier was, is it possible to put a crosswalk from, like in front of 150 Gadwall over to the park, you know, where the park sign is, when you come in off eucalyptus, when you turn into the area? And they have, in front of the park, there is a ramp right there to, you know, for disabled folks to be able to get into the park easier. And I noticed in the mornings, there's a lot of parents bringing their kids. They park all over to, to drop their kids off. And they walk across there. And it seems like it might be a good idea to perhaps have a school crosswalk or just a regular white one or whatever in that area as well, that goes right to that ramp. So folks, like I said, that are disabled would be able to access that much easier. And the cars wouldn't park in front of it as well. So that's it.
Thanks, Karen.
You bet.
Hugh Marquez.
Hello, council and mayor. My name is Hugh Marquez. I'm coming to you this evening. I know we have future plans for Newell Road to go all the way to South Kelly Road. I know that's a plan. And I'm coming to you because I've been told that that area is county property, and that is not city property. And I'm coming to you to ask planning, or if you can find a way to annex that as it gets built. Because we need to say what's going to be put there, not the county. I've come, one of the reasons I came is part of the, the plant, the, the, the plant is I wanted to make sure that we have a say in what type of scenery we're gonna have as our, as visitors are going up and down 29. And I believe there should be a green belt. If we can use native plants, that would be a great thing. But, but I, I, I'm coming to you because I, I had heard about, I know that we want to make that extension, and that's very important. But I want to make sure that our city has a say in what happens to that and not the county. So I'm coming to you, city council, mayor, planning, whoever I need to, to think about that for our future. Thank you.
Just as a point of clarification, Hugh, are you talking about the area north of the Green Island Road?
No, I'm talking the, the Newell Road that'll go this way to South Kelly. Because the, the plan is, is gonna, I believe the plan is, it's gonna, it's gonna go behind the, the, the town center and go all the way to South Kelly at some point. And, and I thought that was city initially. And then I, I, I talked to someone, and I was told, no, that's county. And, and so they say if, 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 if the city, they told me this, if the city wants any say, they're gonna have to annex it.
All right. It may be appropriate to chat with the city manager, just to be clear about there is a section that is still in the county that was just rezoned to industrial. And then the portion south of that, you know, is either in the city or we're trying to annex it. So I was just trying to figure out which is which.
If you are, then, then we're good. But I, I, I didn't know if you were, and I just wanted to make sure it was brought to your attention that, that I, that, that it was told it was county property. And, and that we need to, to make sure, and in my opinion, we need to make sure that becomes city so we have a say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Hugh.
Mayor, just a quick reminder on our future agenda items at our April meeting. We're gonna be having a general plan workshop, and, and all of these areas are part of that conversation, a special study area. So Hugh, take a look for our April, second meeting in April. We'll have some more conversations.
Thank you, Mrs. Holly. Next speaker.
I have no other speaker cards. I do have one hand raised online.
Okay.
Okay, Justin Hamilton-Hole. Go ahead, Justin.
Good evening, mayor. Speaker Hamilton. I have two things. I want to shout out the Fear, Fear Club Napa was in that room. I can't wait. The second thing is, I want to see I, every day morning, I'm looking at hills. There's no house. Well, we're west of Karen, so more. I know the stable, but I not see nobody build a house. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
No others.
I have no other cards or hands raised.
Thank you, madam clerk. Then I'll close public comment and move on to agenda changes. Are there any agenda changes? Do I try to press, press the father and say something? So, so then we'll close public comment and move on to agenda changes. Are there any agenda changes? Hearing none. I'll accept a motion to accept the consent calendar as is. We have five items.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I have a second. We have a second. Madam clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Okay, council member Cruz.
Yes.
Council member Lamatina.
Yes.
Council member Oro.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes.
Mayor Washington.
Yes. Next is public hearing. There are actually no public hearings for this evening, so we'll move on to business. Item number twelve, 2024 Calendar Year General Plan and Housing Element Annual Progress Report.
Brent Cooper. Thank you, Mayor Washington, members of the city council and members of the public. Brent Cooper, Community Development Director. And I'm here with senior planner William Hee. We're pleased to present the General Plan and Housing Element Annual Report. I will make the general plan update very brief. It touts a lot of the accomplishments that have happened in the city in the last year, if you're interested. It's not, it's a very interesting read, not too long. But there are a whole lot of things that have been accomplished in this city in the last year. We provided this presentation to the Planning Commission, and it, at the time, we, we presented the State of the City video hosted by our mayor, because so many of the things that's in the State of the City video actually track a lot of the accomplishments in the general plan report. So I didn't think it was appropriate to show that video again, because you've probably seen it. But if you haven't seen it, you need to check it out. And then also review our annual report. With that, we have a much more substantial conversation about the housing element. And I'll turn it over to William Hee, and he can tell you all about it. It's kind of the equivalent of, of like the income tax for the housing element. And so I'm sure that'll all make sense when William gives his presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and members of the public. Very happy to be here today to give a presentation on the 2024 Annual Housing Report. Quick background on the housing report. This report is required every year, and it highlights work accomplished, and it's, and it's sent to the Housing and Community Development Department, the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, and also the Napa-Sonoma Housing Collaborative. 2024 represents the second year of our current cycle, which is cycle six. Before I begin, just want to give a special thanks to all our housing partners that help us with the work that we do. The City of Napa Housing Authority, the Fair Housing Napa Valley Group, and the Napa-Sonoma ADU Center. And let's get right into it. So 2024 was a big year for housing in American Canyon. According to HCD, they wanted to track how many entitlements, these are like planning entitlements, and units that are approved, how many construction permits or building permits were issued, and also how many certificates of occupancy. So in 2024, we had a hundred-and-sixty-seven units completed for entitlements, two-hundred-and-sixty-five units for building permits, and then three-hundred-and-thirty-seven units for certificates of occupancy or final inspections. For the entitlement side, the hundred-and-sixty-seven units mostly consisted of the Watson Ranch Lot Seven. These were the ones approved for KB Homes and their homes on the site north of Lemus Point. And then there's the twenty-five units in Lot Eight. That's north of the Harvest subdivision. For building permits, the big story here is the Oak Hill and Domain Apartments being developed by Russell Square. These are the units that are up on the hill. They have a hundred-and-eighty-nine units issued. And we, I think they're, they started in, in January of last year, and they're already up to their third story for those apartments. So we look forward to them completing them in this year. Sixty-eight units were issued for the Harvest subdivision, and two, which are the, the last two for Watson Ranch Artisan. For certificates of occupancy, there were five ADUs. And the big story here was the completion of the Lemus Point Apartments. A hundred-and-eighty-six units were all completed last year. The Broadway District Napa Cove Apartment Project, sixty-six units were all completed. And then the, the final twenty-seven units of Artisan were completed last year as well. We also had fifty-three units for the Harvest subdivision, and they are continuing construction this year as well. So that's the big board for 2024. I want to talk a little bit about RENA, which is the Regional Housing and Needs Allocation. You can treat this as the big homework assignment from HCD that gives to each jurisdiction, but we have seven years to complete it. We're in the second year of the sixth cycle. And they, for RENA, they only look at building permits issued. So this year, I mean, in 2024, there were two-hundred-and-sixty-five units issued. And the total for the sixth cycle is four-hundred-and-thirty-eight. So we're doing well in issuing permits, but mostly it's in the above moderate range. So in addition to, to units to be issued, the, the RENA allocation also wants cities to, to provide housing in different affordable levels. So that's the overall snapshot for 2024. We are completed for the above moderate, but there's still some work to do for the very low, low and moderate income categories. Moving ahead, I want to give a, a update on the Napa County Area Median Income. So this, this data is provided by HCD every year around April, and it shows what the affordable levels for houses in Napa County is. So it breaks it down from zero to fifty percent as very low, fifty-one to eighty percent as low, and eighty-one to one-hundred-twenty percent as moderate. So, for example, So for example, if you're a household of four and you make less than $155,000, you're in the moderate income category. So these numbers get updated every year. I just wanted to, to share that with everyone. An update for the Affordable Housing Nexus Fee. So the city has a nexus fee for new housing and commercial projects. And I usually give just the, the numbers for the last three years. And in 2024, we received about $578,000 in affordable nexus fees. And that's mostly due to the Oath Hill and Domain Apartments that were issued last year. Affordable Housing Permit Activity, the, the main story here, as I mentioned earlier, was the Napa Cove and Lemus Point Apartments. The Napa Cove Apartments was, began construction in March of 2022 and was completed in 2024. And the Lemus Point Apartments began construction in 2021 of November and was completed in July of last year. So very excited to see that both of those developments were completed last year. Unfortunately, these units don't count towards the RENA for this cycle because they were issued in the cycle before. But we're still very excited to see that they're completed and, and I think they're already all rented out. I want to mention a little bit about accessory dwelling units or ADUs. This has been a hot topic for the state. There's constantly new ADU laws coming out every year. It's a great source of low income and very low income units for the city. There's many ways to do it, including a detach or a garage conversion. And the, the fees have been substantially reduced since 2017. We get a lot of support from the Napa Sonoma ADU Center Group. They, they help us out a lot. We actually had a meeting with them today and they're, they're starting to develop these standard or pre-approved plans that we're looking forward to working with them in the near future. And just to give some numbers to, to the ADUs, if we look at the number of ADU building permits that were issued from 2017 to 2024, the average was 3.4 units a year. But if we, we shrink that snapshot to 2021 to 2024, we're getting five a year. And we got six last year. So hopefully we'll see six in 2025 and, and, and the years after. Housing Program Efforts, so these are not numbers, but these are some of the efforts that we completed in 2024 for programs. In April, we did a big municipal code update for the community commercial zone as well as the ADUs and manufactured homes. In May, we resolved to participate in the Pro Housing Designation Program and also applied for a Pro Housing Grant. In June, July, and August, the summer months, we had three Meet Me in the Streets events. So staff was out there providing information on upcoming projects, but also housing efforts. And we also had Jonathan from the Housing Authority was there in two of those events. So he was actually giving like applications to folks that were interested in some help. And then in October, we, the Planning Commission approved the Lot 7 project, which had a, an increase to the FAR and reduced garage setbacks. So those are just some of the things that we did last year. And that's it for 2024. The next slide is me bringing out the crystal ball and seeing what's perspective for 2025. So these are just what we think, but you know, no guarantees. Entitlement Processing, we, we hope to see the Crawford Multi-Family Project. Hopefully in March this month for Planning Commission. That's 100 units proposed for the, the lot at Crawford and Highway 29. The Canyon Estates Single Family dwellings. The developers working with Richmond America to bring some new plans to that site. So hopefully they'll have some pre-designed plans and a design permit for those soon. For building permits, we will see the Sun Square Project. They were approved about, just about two years ago. They have their building permits submitted, but they're, we're just waiting for them to, to respond. So they're getting close to their, to starting their construction. Promontory, that's the Watson Ranch subdivision. That's the, on the Newell family side. They're working with staff on their improvement plans. And then Lot 7 and Lot 8 also, they're working with staff on their improvement plans. And lastly, for construction, we, we, we see the continued developments of the Oath Hill Apartments. Last year, we saw 180 units were issued. Hopefully the, the remainder 100 units for the upper half will be issued this year in 2025. And also for Harvest, I think they're about 30% or 40% done. Hopefully they will continue and try to finish all of the units in 2025. So that's it in a nutshell. We've gave this presentation to the Planning Commission in February. The next step is to send this off to HCD.
That's it.
That's it.
Thank you, William and Brett both for the presentation. Are there any clarifying questions from council? Vice Mayor Joseph.
I wanted to zero in on the low and very low percentage because, and it was discouraging to read in the report that building permits are what matter, not occupancy. Seems counterintuitive, but it's the state, so you can't expect that. So in a nutshell, what's our strategy? Since we're at about 10% of our requirements, you know, four to 4% of the very low, low and moderate, how are we going to catch up even though we're asking you to be prospective or whatever?
I'm going to give a little thought, but I'll let Director Cooper continue. But I think as I started saying, that the ADUs might be our, our best bet because the infrastructure is already there. We're seeing like five or six a year. We might see more if the word gets out.
And Promontory, I think has like 50 some odd ADUs built in. So are we going to get to take credit for all of those as low or very low when they pull permits?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, good. That's comforting. What else?
One of the, well, as we know, the city itself doesn't build housing. And if you were to look at the state laws that hold cities accountable for housing, I think there's a presumption that cities resist housing. And that may be true outside of American Canyon. This council's been very supportive of housing and has done a lot of planning. Watson Ranch, Broadway District, Oath Hill and others. And so we are really beholden to developers bringing projects to the city. On the discouraging side, we are hearing from some of them that with increased costs and inflation, it's becoming more difficult to accommodate the affordable housing component. So that's something to keep in mind. We do have affordable housing nexus fees. It's a very modest amount. I think altogether, there is something in the neighborhood of $600,000, which could help leverage grants or leverage a project if it were to come to help with that. So we are looking at our, our different options and encouraging applicants to include affordability in their project. There is also, I'll say one last thing, flexibility in our code as encouraged by state law to look at a variety of creative ways in which to provide affordable housing through a number of ways. And so we'll be keeping an eye on that. But one thing we do need is for our new projects to come so that we can work with something. So our, our next one is the Crawford Way Project. I did get word from our applicant at the larger project over, over by Duncan Donuts up there. And apparently they are going to withdraw that application. So housing is a difficult thing to build anywhere just because of interest rates and costs and economics largely. But we do what we can to help and we have policies to encourage it and programs. And so I think at the end of the day, we just do the best we can. And I'm sure we will average better than most cities in the state.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, Brent. I actually noticed that there is a growing interest in ADUs. Matter of fact, I've had some residents call me that I've referred to you to go out and reach out and talk to them. So thank you for that. And I like the proactive approach that we're taking, taking advantage of things like Meet Me in the Street to kind of get the, the community educated on, on how they could invest and how they could be proactive as well in supporting the cause. So thank you for what you're doing.
Yes, and actually I, I can give you a little bit of an update. It isn't necessarily for affordable housing, but the Housing Authority of Napa is going to be applying for a grant on behalf of the city to provide additional funds for people who are low-income homeowners to get free or very low and deferred interest loans to make repairs to their homes. And, and that's a really wonderful thing so that people can stay in their homes in healthy and safe conditions. And it's programs like this that we want to also not only expand our affordable housing, but keep the affordable housing we have for people who need that assistance because homeownership is expensive.
Can I follow up on that? Is, does that also include making it more energy efficient, insulation and so forth?
It does include all of those kinds of improvements. We will be having a presentation at the council meeting in May, I believe, with the Jonathan Sakamoto of the Napa Housing Authority. And, and he can tell us more about it.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, I'd like to open up the public comment for item number 12. Any public comment?
I do have one card. Zoe Siegel.
Hi, Zoe.
Hello. Hi, my name is Zoe Siegel. I'm actually here to talk about a different agenda item, but then I heard this presentation and just had to share some thoughts as well. So I work for an organization called Green Belt Alliance and we do land use and housing advocacy all over the Bay Area. I'm the Director of Climate Resilience there. And I really just wanted to acknowledge and thank American Canyon for the great step towards meeting your RENA goals. I think this is really great. And I know how difficult it is to build housing in the Bay Area right now. I think the, the latest Housing Element Progress Report really shows that you've, you know, really far exceeded the targets for above moderate income housing, which is amazing. But I do think there's still some growth opportunities for the very low and low moderate income housing. And, you know, strengthening or reducing these imbalances will help our housing crisis and reduce the displacement of working families. And so I have a couple of, of recommendations in order to further meet the, the RENA goals. I think, you know, further expanding funding for affordable housing with things like, you know, prioritizing fee reductions or tax incentives, land acquisitions. I know, I heard that, you know, you guys don't build housing, but maybe there's other land. Once again, I'm not an expert in that specific part in American Canyon. But then also for the, the ADU topic, I think, you know, it's, it's really great that there's more ADUs than, than there were before. I think, you know, another way to make ADUs more accessible would be to continue to fast-track the approvals. I love that you're considering the pre-approved designs. Maybe there's another grant or an opportunity that would provide financial assistance to for lower-income homeowners to provide, to build ADUs. And then expanding missing middle housing, you know, beyond the Watson Ranch to encourage, you know, multi-unit, small-scale infill housing. Also, I know the cost of housing is rising and, you know, it's only going to continue to do so in the next few years. One way to, you know, still try to build housing while not making it as expensive would be to work on permit streamlining, maybe, you know, look into creating like more of a fast-track review system for, you know, 100% affordable projects or something like that. And I know this is a little bit more pie in the sky, but, and especially difficult when it's harder to build housing overall, but requiring more affordability in new developments would also strengthen, and strengthen inclusionary zoning and ensure, ensure large projects, projects like Watson Ranch would contribute more to lower-income housing. So those are all just a couple of quick recommendations. But overall, I really appreciate all the work that has been done on this and hope that, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Zoe. I mean, you said you were unprepared to talk about this, but you did a pretty good job. I, I, I appreciate the, you mentioning our wins as well and the recommendations. Thank you. Any other speakers?
I have no other speaker cards for this item and no hands are raised online.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If there's no more public comments, I'd like to close public comment and return to the council for any additional statement, questions, or a motion. Or was this just a file? Re, receive a file. Thank you, Brent. Thank you, William. Next business item is item number 13, American Canyon Police Department 2024 Annual Report with our Chief Rick Greenberg.
Great. Well, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and members of the community. First, I'm going to raise this up a little bit, so I'll have to bend over the whole time. Rick Greenberg, I'm your police chief here in American Canyon. Tonight, it's my pleasure to present to you the 2024 American Canyon Police Department Annual Report. And this report highlights outstanding police work performed by our officers and the services that we provide to the community of American Canyon. So first, I'll just start with a brief staffing update. I don't have a slide for this, but it's just, staffing hasn't really changed in the last year. We have 26 sworn officers. Of those 26 sworn, two serve as school resource officers, one at the high school, one at the middle school. Two are assigned specifically to traffic enforcement. They're the ones you see driving the Harley motorcycles around town. Hopefully, none of you have met them. One serves as our community resource officer. And this position's really important in our department and for the community. The current officer, she focuses on community engagement and, and community outreach with the, with the police department. And then also just overall improvement of quality of life here in American Canyon. And then lastly, we have two Canyon officers that are assigned to American Canyon and they're furry companions. Just a, kind of an overview, we also have two non-sworn police technicians and they're, they're city employees. And their, their duties include parking enforcement, abandoned vehicle removal. They assist on crimes that are cold, cold, that don't have any suspects. And they, they assist on taking reports on those and then also traffic collisions. And then we have one full-time front counter clerk. She's a records technician is her actual title. She is a part of the contract with the Sheriff's Department. And her duties are to, as community comes in for police reports, to get copies, vehicle releases, and then also processing invoices. So I'm big on staff recognition and what our people do and what the officers are out doing in the community. So the first picture on the top left is of the 2024 Mad Recipient Award. And this officer, this is Officer Cassie Cassandra Fallon. And she received the Mothers Against Drunk Driving Award in 2024 in her efforts of getting drunk drivers off the street. The next picture to the right is also Officer Fallon. And then along with Officer Keone Pacino. And they were recipients of the Officer of the Year Award at the city-hosted event. And they received the Officer of the Year Award, both of them, for their proactive crime fighting and dedication to keep Marion Canyon a safe place to live, work, and play. And then at the bottom is a very prestigious award. This is the Medal of Valor Award. And it was given, this isn't an award that's given on a yearly basis. Sometimes it's not given in a decade. This award was given to five officers. Last spring, we had a, in 2024, we had a, a critical incident at Safeway. It was a shooting. These officers responded. It was in daylight. Their heroic actions saved lives and led to the arrest of multiple suspects. And that criminal case is still ongoing. And for that, for their heroic efforts, they received the Medal of Valor. And then next is our, some program highlights that we have along with just regular patrol in American Canyon. We've revamped our bicycle patrol program and we've included an e-bike. And our bicycle patrol- And our bicycle patrol program, it, the e-bike allows more efficient patrols of the entire city, both day and night, so we don't, they don't just patrol during the daytime, they actually are out at nighttime as well, and then also our open spaces. And then the picture to the right of the, the fine young men there, these are our four police explorers, and we, we launched that program again last year, and it's, it's very successful. And what this program does, it, it provides career development, leadership, and mentorship opportunities for high-school-aged youth, and in 2024, we welcome these four fine young Now, I'll get into some stats. I'll start with the calls for service. In 2024, American Canyon Police Department responded to 14,776 calls for service. Total arrests were 516. And I'd like to highlight that, as you can see by the, the chart up here, it depicts that, what geographic region that the arrestees were from. So, American Canyon actual residents is a very small percentage of that. And that, that, that's typical, we see that year after year, not just this year. And then at the bottom, I'd also, this is, this is a win for us where we've only had to use, of those 516 arrests, only 23 required use of force. So traffic enforcement, these are our, our Harley motorcycle officers out there doing So citations, I, I have the arrows up and down, those are, those are up or down from last year, from 2025. Local roads, we had 573 citations, and that was, that was up. On Highway 29 specifically, 193, and those were down. And part of that, the reason for those, I've, I've been having our traffic enforcement focus on not just Highway 29. You could, you could write a lot of citations on Highway 29, but our local roads are important too, because that's where our schools are at. The next one is the school bus stop, that is the, the flashing red lights on the back of the school bus, so those are up, and they, they proactively enforce that, because obviously the kids are on the bus, and we want to make sure that they're getting to school safe. Stop sign violations, 192, those are up. And then I'll move over to traffic collisions. Local roads, they were slightly up, 75. Traffic collisions on Highway 29 were slightly down at 52. And then I'm pleased that we did not have one fatal accident in American Canyon last year, and that's down. And then we, I'll move on to crime statistics. And I'll highlight first, in 2024, American Canyon Police Department, we seized 50 firearms. It was just slightly under, I believe, what we had last year. That average is about one per week. And these firearms were, they were either used in crimes, or they were possessed illegally, possibly by, you know, a felon who's been convicted of felony, can't have a firearm. Many of these seizures resulted from proactive policing efforts, such as traffic stops initiated originally from mechanical or moving violations. Overall, crime is generally down. The only crime that was up, unfortunately, was a homicide. We did have one homicide last year. And then Crimes Against People was down from 2023, 119. And those crimes, crimes against people are, it's an overview of assaults, domestic violence, any crime against a person. And property crimes is all their crimes, that's where thefts, burglaries, and that type of thing, and that's, that was down too, at 285. And I'm really pleased to see that our pursuits went down, and that just means that folks are stopping for us and respecting that we're trying to pull them over and respecting law enforcement. So terminated pursuits and pursuits were down. And at the bottom, it's pretty easy to see, the numbers might be a little hard to see in the back, but, so they don't have the 2024 numbers out for the Department of Justice, but this is like the overall crime solvability in the state of California. And for this, Department of Justice last year had 54.7% for violent crimes, and those are like your crimes against persons like I just talked about, and then property crime, I'm sorry, this is for American Canyon, is at 30.1. So that's really good if you look at, we're just above average for the state on violent crimes, and then property crimes, as you see where we really shine, is we're well above what the state overall is, at 30% compared to, you know, just over 7. Some additional services I talked about are, are two school resource officers, and so last year, both schools were down in calls for service, which is awesome. And these are, this photo is of both of our high-school resource officer, Officer Coleman, and the middle-school officer, Tony Hushell. And then lastly, on this slide, our animal services, these are the guys out collecting the loose dogs, enforcing dog laws, and unfortunately, calls for that were up at 625. So obviously, this is just a highlight of the entire annual report, and it is currently available online for you to view at the american canyon.gov police section. If you go there, you'll find the, the report, and you can view it the entirety online. And then it'll also be posted out on social media later this week. And with that, that's the end of my presentation. Any questions or comments?
Thank you, Chief Greenberg. First, I'd like to say that I think you do an amazing job as a leader for the, for the police department. You know, I, I see you at almost every event that I go to, so thank you for leading by example. And your, and your officers also are very community-oriented, and I got to say that when I talk to people in the community, having a law enforcement background, I've never experienced a time where somebody said they loved their police department. I don't, I don't think I've had anybody other than maybe a criminal that tell me they didn't like our police department, so thank you for what you do. I'll open it up for council's comments. Councilmember Cruz.
Thank you, Mayor. So Chief Rick, just going back on your stats, I think he showed NSO calls for service 24,073 and ACPD 14,776. I just wanted to illustrate that to the crowd, to the community out here, is that they had more than half the calls for service of the whole county wide, and they did such a great jobs. They took 50 illegal guns off the street, the crime stats are down, and I just want to illustrate too, what kind of service and sacrifice that means. If you notice, the chief's wearing a black cloth on his, on his badge, which signifies what? Most of you guys probably know that, it was a recent death of a police officer in San Bernardino County. So that just goes to show the sacrifice that our men and women do out there, so I appreciate you, Chief, and thank you for everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question for council? No? I'll open it up for public comment. Any public comment?
I have no speaker cards. I do have a hand raised online.
And we have one raised inside of the audience as well. You can come up to the, to the mic. Just state your name, and you have three minutes.
My name is, my name is Ingrid Schubert, and I live in Napa. I have a question to the police officer. I see so many cars out there with darkened windows, which are illegal, and I'm wondering how difficult is it for you to deal with these cars that you pull over that have those windows? Because you can't really see the people.
If you can answer.
So it is a vehicle code violation. I don't know the, the vehicle code section of book is about that thick, so I don't have the whole thing memorized by numbers, obviously, but it is a violation. It is a safety hazard, and that's the reason, it's not just a safety hazard for driving because at nighttime, your vision's really obscured, especially with the lights reflecting on the mirror of the tent. It also is a safety hazard for us as officers because we can't see who's in the car. We can't see how many people are in the car, if someone is brandishing a weapon as we're walking up to the car, so, so yes, it is, it is, that's why it's a, it's a illegal to have a certain percentage of window tint.
You say we, we do have one.
I do have one online, so.
Okay, I'll get, I'll get, we'll get the online, then I'll get you Father Fred.
Okay. Just gonna be, Justin, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Kelsey. I want to, thinking what the police doing last year, amazing. I want to shout out our police chief, shout out Napa County Sheriff, and shout out City Napa and shout out Napa County Sheriff. I want to, like I know, I say, there they, this year last year, that did not do nothing, but I wanted to thank you, keep me safe. Thank you. All the officers, thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Thank you, Justin.
Father Fred.
Thank you, Council. My name is Father Fred from Holy Family here, I'm the pastor of the church, and I just want to thank the law enforcement for whatever they do, it's just incredible, and I've had incidents in the church where not only them, but the fire department and paramedics, we've had incidents in the church, and you call them, less than five minutes, they are there to erase the situation. So I just want you to know how incredible these people are. So I guess I keep you in my praise, and I thank you for all that you do. That's all I want to say, and thank the city for your able supervision over the city, and I really enjoy the safety of the place, and I've been to all parts of the United States, but this is my home, and I don't want to go anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Father. If there's no other, Beth?
Yes, good evening, Beth Marcus. First of all, thank you, Chief, for being here with us, it's a pleasure. They came to my house last year when some idiot came through my fence and almost ran into my house, and I'm very thankful for that, but I don't know why you didn't have that slide up there. But anyhow, I did have a question. I know we're supposed to stop for the school buses. What about the ACT bus? I've seen people go around the ACT bus, that's a different type of a situation, correct? You know, the Marion Canyon?
Yeah, the flashing red, the stop.
Okay. I've seen people go around, and I just, I thought to myself, I think it's the same thing as the other buses, but anyhow, thank you again for everything you do. I agree with you, Father Fred, every time I hear a siren, I say a little prayer for everybody. We couldn't live in a safer community than having our police and fire department here, and just thank you again.
Thank you, Beth.
Hello, everyone, my name is Sophie, and I would like to thank our police department for initiating that no one should park on the bike lane, especially near schools. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Sophie. Any other public comment? I'll close comment, public comment, return to council for any additional comments. I'll lead, I'll lead it with, I also would like to thank you for the communication that you put out after there is an arrest. They're, they're very helpful, they're informative, you know, a lot of times, we see the lights and sirens on the streets, but we don't really get the details, but I like how you come back, and especially ones that recover weapons, recover drugs, and it kind of lets everybody else know that we don't live in a bubble, that we do live in an area where we have the element of crime that's out there. So I appreciate all the information that you do and the high visibility, but to the council, anyone else has anything? Well, I'll close.
Just, just to say, it's a good report, and you're doing a great job. Everything else has been said, so thanks.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I, I would agree with all of that, and, you know, I think we have a lot of people in the audience today from Napa, and I would like to remind everybody here that in American Canyon, we wave at our police with all five fingers, so.
That's true, that's very true. Well, thank you, Chief, appreciate that report. Our next business item is item number 14, Brand and Editorial Style Guide Update and the 2024 Annual Communication Report by Ms. Jen Hasselbeck.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Jen Kansenbeck, I'm the city's communications manager. Hold on, I have to adjust a little bit, just a little bit.
A lot.
I love that button, I love playing with it. Silly, I know. Okay, so I'm here this evening for two, a two-parter. The first is to talk about the Brand and Editorial Style Guide Update, and then the second part of my presentation is the 2024 Communications Report. So I'm going to jump right in with the first item, the Brand and Editorial Style Guide Update. There's a picture of it, so beautiful. So this is a document that was implemented in 2015. It was following the 2013 community visioning process, and the style guide helps us ensure consistent communication and branding across all of our platforms. And the original style guide, when it was implemented, also created a new logo, which is what you see everywhere now. It also differentiated, or I guess complimented, the original city seal, which also served as the city logo as well. Sorry, I got a little lost there for a second. So, as I said, this document was implemented in 2015, 2015, so 10 years ago. So in this last decade, we've had a lot of changes in technology, we've had a lot of changes in the way that we do things. So this update is going to help decipher the difference of the seal and the logo use, which has been something over these years that has kind of panned, you know, we've continued to work on. The update also incorporates new logos that you've seen over the past 10 years, such as "We heart everyone" in Amcan, "Love where you live," part of the general plan. The Virtual City Hall implementation created another branding logo for the Virtual City Hall. We also have a couple other logos for our open space and wetlands preserve spaces that complement this logo as well. So, and finally, this is going to include the branding elements from our new website as well, so that's important too. And finally, it will memorialize the city brand and set the standards for all of our external, external communications moving forward. So I'm going to pause there because that's all I really had to say about it. You have a resolution to consider approving this update to this plan that was, that, that's been updated, so I don't know if you want me to continue or if you want me to pause.
We could probably pause and then address this one, so you can move on to the second one.
Sure.
But I guess just for clarification, it's because we didn't do this back in 2015 is why we're doing this now?
I'm going to turn that over to the city manager.
Yeah, Mayor, essentially, after the visioning process concluded, the process for the, for the new logo and everything kind of got developed, and we felt like it would be appropriate to bring this forward as we were updating it. The, the version that we have right now is several years old, and so we wanted to really get the context and blessing of the council with this. We've, you know, we've used it in a lot of places, but we never had come to the council for approval, so we felt like that was important. And I think it's really important to distinguish how we use these two different, you know, emblems. We use really the, the seal for the most official of documents, and we actually, in reviewing this, realized we're actually going to go back even in our proclamations and start using the seal for our proclamations, but our, our proclamations and our warrants and our, our OSF office, our certificates of appreciation for years of service for employees, those sorts of, you know, those sorts of memorial kind of activities, whereas the, the branding of the logo is more of our, a little more of an external-facing kind of, kind of brand, that kind of facing that way. And so you'll see it in staff reports, you'll see it in, in, in other kinds of reports and communications. And so you'll see it in staff reports, you'll see it in, in, in other kinds of reports and communications to the city. So we went to kinda distinguish those two pieces and, you know, get buy-in from the council on this. We weren't terribly comfortable with having not gone forward with council approval prior. So wanted to kinda blend this with the update tonight.
Okay, sounds good, thank you, Mr. Holly. I'll bring it back to the council then, are there any clarifying questions or concerns for council? Councilmember Oro.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Jen, for this report. Did, did you happen to prepare any of the other logos so the public can see them? Do you have those up for you now, the "We Love American Canyon"?
I do not.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
But they are in the packet, this entire update is in, I can show you on paper, but.
Yeah, I know, okay, thanks, no worries. No, I, I actually think this is important because I too was confused about the seal and the logo and I had to have it explained to me a while back and like to honor the original history that came through the seal that acted as our logo, but also while modernizing the look and feel of American Canyon are important. And I actually think the Brand and Editorial Style Guidelines is also an important document to have because it guides the rest of the city and how we present ourselves to the world. Now, I say that with conviction because this is what I do for a living. So this, I'm glad to see this happen. And some people will say, yeah, it's not that important until you realize how important it is. And in fact, the example that Mr. Holly gave today, it was like, yeah, our official document should have the seal. But when we present ourselves like on camera or something, you know what? This, this logo behind here should be good. Now, I went through and read the whole thing. There is one thing I would add to this report before we adopt it and I'd hope the council would agree with me. And what I wrote down in my notes, first of all, I had a typo, it said "good."
Where?
But I wrote "go goof."
Oh, you typoed.
I might typoed it.
Oh, great.
But what I wanna add to this someplace, and I think if we can amend it in a way, wherever possible, let's use photos of American Canyon citizens or local places. I've seen some stock photos pull into our communications in the past and it hurt to say, that's not a street that we live on or a kid that doesn't go here or an adult I've never seen before, it's very obvious. And if, if we can, it doesn't have to be required because I know, I realize that sometimes a stock photo needs to be pulled, but if we can add that to the policy.
Absolutely.
That would be great.
We actually do that in our practice, we've had a lot of photo shoots in the last couple of years and you saw the big fancy camera that we bring out. So we're working on developing our, our photo albums, but that's definitely our first choice on any designs that we do is being local and real. So we'll continue building that and also document it in here.
Yeah, so I just wanna do that, yeah, and you, and you have to think really hard, like, with the, all the shots you'll need. I need a kid crossing the street, I need somebody at the library and, you know, it might be worth it to go around spending a week in American Canyon, take a bunch of photos.
Really, really quick segue on that story, we had a videographer out here last December. They did drone footage of the Holiday Marketplace event and I said, keep them out here the next day, cuz I know we had a reindeer run and so they stick around, they got special approval, cuz that's real close to the airport apparently. And so anyway, they were doing some really great drone footage, that shows up in our video, our State of the City of video showing all those pieces over there, so.
Yeah.
If there's no other comments on city council, I'd like to open it up to public comment for the first half of item fourteen, if you have any questions about the logos. Seeing none, I'll return back to you, Jen, for the second half of item number fourteen.
Okay, so part two, chapter two of the story is the Annual Communications Report. So the communication team, our goal is to increase resident engagement, promoting our city's vibrant lifestyle and offerings, including our beautiful outdoor spaces and our wetlands for residents, businesses, and visitors. And our team consists of myself, a full-time position. We have a consultant, Trepapi Smith, that supports our efforts. And also, all of you, city council, staff, our partners, everyone, so. Quick look at the numbers from our reach. We have almost 31,000 followers on our social media pages and we post around 242 times a month across these pages. We publish 24 newsletters a month, those range between the bi-weekly city manager's update, the Neighborhood Watch Newsletter, Around Town Update, so many, I can't even remember off the top of my head, but it's 24 a month. Our website was launched, relaunched on July 1st with the .gov domain and we have around 14,000 visitors a month to our website. We have a lot of really great tools inside of our new website management system behind the scenes to be able to really know what people are doing when they, like, not big brotherish, but like if you're searching on our page, we can go in and add things to make it easier for you to find what you're looking for if your search wasn't successful. So we're constantly evaluating and adding to those best bets and keywords and things like that to make your experience better. Govdelivery is our email system where we send our newsletters out. So we send, excuse me, we have a little more than 21,000 subscribers. And I believe this is our third year that we've had over 65% engagement rate on our email delivery, which is well above government standards with Govdelivery. So that's a really good, it's a really good result. That means that people that get those 24 newsletters a month are clicking on them and hopefully reading them, I see them shared on social media, so that tells me that some of it's getting read. Okay, so 2024, you'll see the State of the City as one of our key projects because we actually start State of the City in around August of each year. So it's a pretty long process that, for us to put together the book, the publication that you got mailed to your homes here in American Canyon and then the video series that were produced to tell the story of living, working, and playing in American Canyon. And then also the open house that we put into the roadshow this year, the passport process with the stickers and the signage and all those types of things. Couple more key projects, the utility rates increased this year. So just a side note, cuz I actually noticed this, my bill was higher this month than last month. So if your bill's higher, it's because the rates changed, had to remind myself. So yeah, so the key, another key project was the utility rates process, getting out the information about that, making sure that people were informed. The Parks and Recreation, three seasons worth of guides this year, which is really great to have those back. We also have produced presentations for different various professional organizations and those are really great, our city manager and our staff are able to go to tell our story and how we're doing things in a really great way and share it with other local government agencies and our peers to do the same in their communities. Side note, I have to say, we do get contacted quite frequently for copies of different things that we do so other cities can do it, so that's kinda cool. We also produced the American Canyon Police Report that you just saw. Few highlights for social media from this last year. The first picture up on the top left is kinda funny that it was the top. It's actually a, I don't know if you remember seeing it, there was a very large piece of equipment that was moved through the city and so there was a traffic thing that happened with that. And so that was one of the top stories this last year of our engagement on that post. The mayor being sworn in was another one. The AC Wolves state championship win was also one of our highlights. Our city council community updates, every council meeting, when it's over, we produce a council community update that we share on social media that highlights what you talked about this evening and shares some pictures that you see me taking or someone taking in this room. And so you'll see the last picture, another highlight was council member Abadamas and recognizing her service to the community, so those were some popular, those were our popular items for last year. So a couple of more highlights in driving civic engagement and projects that we were supporting. Again, the city council community updates, that's something we implemented thus, this last year. I should also mention it's included in the minutes too of every meeting. So we're trying to find all the different ways to push it out there, also on our website. The middle picture on the top is our Citizens Academy that graduated this past year. They participated in a beautification project at the end of their academy out, my map skills, I don't work in public works. So over here in the parking lot, there's a picnic area where people can sit and have lunch and they helped beautify that by planting plants and making it very nice. So that's what that picture is from, the academy is an eight-week program that they participate in learning about our city and how we do things. The bottom is a picture of our website, the Virtual City Hall, and that was relaunched and improved last July, so that was a big deliverable. And then also, last but not least, our city manager's update is the longer picture on the right. We share that every other week and then we post that out on socials and Nextdoor and things like that. That is the end of my presentation, so I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Any questions from council? On the second, on the second half of item fourteen.
On chapter two.
Chapter two, and then we'll open it up to public comment if there's any questions about the second half of item number fourteen. Seeing none, any online?
There's a mic, come up and say it, no, just kidding.
We, city manager?
Great job.
Thank you.
Mr. Holly?
Good job, good job.
Mayor Washington, we do need a motion and a vote on the resolution.
I was gonna make that, but I think there's a comment.
Yeah, there's one more comment by Mr. Holly.
Just, if you wouldn't mind, Mayor. Trying to push off my light there. As Jen wraps up, I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge her impending retirement next month. This'll be the last time that she presents this annual report to you and I really wanna commend her and the team that have pulled together these reports and, and all the efforts that, that she has put forth, you know, in service to this community and this organization. I think a lot of what she does is so very public and so very high-profile that she really doesn't get all the recognition behind the scenes with all the effort and the work and almost the 24/7 nature of what, what she's had to do over the past couple of years and really elevate, you know, the amount of communication that we're doing. The numbers that she shared are pretty remarkable and, and some of the, the touch points and the depth and the breadth and everything are really, are really top-notch. So wanted to recommend that we acknowledge Jen and be thankful for all of her efforts.
I think you deserve a standing ovation for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. And thank you, Mr. Holly, for recognizing her.
Well, if there's no further comment or celebrations, I'll make a motion to prevent Jen from retiring.
Yeah, I'll second that.
I'm sorry, my house is sold, it's a done deal.
You can be homeless here in American Canyon.
Yeah, so I'm getting questions here, so let me just answer really quick cuz some people in the room didn't know this news. So my husband and I are actually selling our house, I'm relocating to South Carolina. Our kids were in the military and they were born and raised here in this community. I'm now 18 in this community, so I'm moving out. But my family, my children are in Virginia and Florida now and so we're gonna move to be closer to them. And I'm hoping that someday I'll still get to have some sort of a role here in American Canyon, so you might see me again, maybe on a screen or something. But it's time for me to go be with my babies, who are grownups now. So, thank you, Jason, and thank you, everyone.
And so with the real matter at hand, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 2025, next in order, a resolution of the city council of the City of American Canyon approving the updated Brand and Editorial Style Guide.
I'll second that, but it's as amended to include use local photos wherever possible.
Thank you, sir, that was actually my amendment, thank you.
We have a second, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamatina.
Yes.
Councilmember Oro.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Joseph.
Yes.
Mayor Washington.
Yes. Our next item is item number 15, Funding for the Juneteenth Festival Celebration. I know Ms. Brendan Knight was here, she had to leave for a slight emergency, but I was told she's on her way back. Do we wanna put that at the very end of, I guess?
You know, I think, Mayor, I do think she's coming back and I can go through maybe the, the staff report. I know Councilwoman Joseph can kind of, Vice Mayor Joseph can kinda chime in too and we are expecting her back, otherwise it might be a little late.
I, I agree, so you wanna go forth with?
She's in the parking lot and I'll cover the first part and then she'll roll up in style. So yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor. The item tonight relates to the Juneteenth Festival. This is an event officially hosted by the American Canyon Arts Foundation and then they engage with, with Brendan Knight events to, to put on this event. It's hap, three years now in a row the event has occurred and they're looking to go forward with another series of events. And so back in 2022, back in 2022, the city council appropriated $25,000. At the time, it wasn't necessarily known how, how long that would last or how many events cuz the, it was the first time doing this event, it really was the first and only Juneteenth event in, in the county. There are other events in the region, so there wasn't necessarily an understanding of the costs or other revenue sources and whatnot. So it, it turns out that it's really been three years' worth of events. The, the Arts Foundation and Brenda have been able to obtain other funding sources. Now, the American Canyon TBID is one of those funding sources, there are other countywide arts programs, I believe, that have been other funding sources along with vendors and some revenue from vendors and things. So the financial statements are shown in, on page 246 of your packet, it's really Attachment 1. And kind of, the Arts Foundation is able to document the revenues and expenses each year. And, you know, what you see is, you know, the contribution from American Canyon plus other revenue sources of what it takes to put on the event. And, you know, we've been able to track using our Placer AI cellphone data mechanism or computer software, the attendance and those pieces of information show up on page 248 and you can kind of see there in the, in the graphics, the attendance numbers for each, for each of the three years.
Can you for, just for the public so they could realize, cuz they don't probably see it right now, if it's going up, if it's going down, if it's stabilized?
Yeah, actually, the, the data shows the first year around 1,100 and around 1,000 people, the second year a little bit lesser, last year around, around 600. My understanding though, has to do with the nature of sort of the competitive of other events going on at the same time. And Brenda might be able to talk more about that, oh, there's Brenda. She might be able to talk a little bit more about this year's particular event and, and maybe some of the, the co-locating of some of the, some of the energy and not competing as much with some of the events. But, so yeah, the, you know, the, the thought tonight, it's not an action item, but we really wanted to get feedback from the council. Is this something that the council wants to continue to fund? If so, do we wanna do another three years' worth, another three years' worth of appropriation? Do you wanna come back for sort of annual appropriations each year? Or, you know, are we done with this and not do anything? So we didn't wanna bring a resolution with the, you know, a fill-in-the-blank number, that would've been a little awkward. So we wanted to bring this as an informational item and do you wanna give Brenda an opportunity to talk about what she's got planned?
I'd like to give Brenda an opportunity, come on up, welcome back, Brenda, we're gonna have you come up. Hopefully you still have that energy.
And hopefully everything. You know, the police chief is gonna still be here. I'm not gonna even tell you how quickly I got here. But let me just catch my breath. I hear the fire department had a helicopter, I should've called them. Yeah, so, whoo, okay, good evening, council, Mayor. And my mom is safely in bed and I wanted to come out and just give a brief overview of the Juneteenth and be able to answer any questions for anyone who may have any. And also, I'm glad to be here on a night where diversity is the topic here tonight. So it's a perfect night for us all to be here giving some type of presentation. I just wanna, before I get into the report that the staff has and probably have questions on, I just want to quickly give a little overview of what the Juneteenth that we have in celebrating every year. And it's only gonna take me about three minutes and then I might have another three minutes to do some other things. President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation in 1863. The Confederate Army surrendered to the Union Army in 1865. But enslaved people in Texas could not exercise their freedom until June 19th, 1865. On that date, General Granger from the Union Army led 2,000 Union troops, many of who were black, into Galveston Bay, yes, in Texas, and announced that the enslaved black people in the state of Texas were free by an executive decree. That was 250 enslaved people. 250,000 enslaved people. 250,000. So what happened with that? This is the flag that came up from the Juneteenth celebration now. These colors of the Juneteenth flag are red, white, and blue, which are the same as the United States flag. It is a reminder that the formerly enslaved black people and their descendants were and are Americans too. The white star in the middle, this one here, represents Texas, known as the Lone Star State. The star also represents the freedom of African-Americans in all 50 states. The bursting around the star represents a new beginning for the African-Americans of Galveston and throughout the land. This arch, or you may call it a curve, that extends across the width of the flag represents a new horizon and the opportunities and promise that lay ahead for black Americans. Finally, this date on the flag is June 19th, 1865, which represents the day that enslaved black people in Galveston, Texas, became Americans under the law. So more than two years after the Emancipation Proclamation is when they became free. You were here at this Juneteenth celebration, which we all, as African-Americans, now celebrate our freedom. At this celebration, you will hear more of the history. You will hear a genre of music throughout the celebration, because I bring in R&B. I bring in gospel. I bring in jazz and blues. Each of those genre of music has a story, and each of those genre of music celebrates the African-American people. And so after the Juneteenth back in 1865, we now celebrate all throughout the United States. For the fourth year, I am proud to bring the Juneteenth Celebration to American Canyon in the Napa Valley to continue that celebration and to help educate others within our communities. And that's what we're all about, learning about each other, learning about those struggles, learning about what we're doing. And so for the last few years, you have been a sponsor, you have been making contributions, and the numbers have been up and down. Last year, they went down because the city in Fairfield had a big, huge name, two people who people knew well, performing in their art, which was the music. The music brings the people out. The music puts down the stress. The music causes us to embrace one another. The music make us forget about everything. And here it comes again, that time of year, for us to celebrate along with our African-American residents in American Canyon to enjoy the music, to enjoy one another. And so I'm here for the council to ask, please, continue to support, and I hope this is not something that you want to give up, because it's too nice, it's too wonderful, it's too loving, it's too caring. I went home to put my mom to bed because she's sick, and asked my son, please come here while I go back. That's how much I am into doing what I do for the Juneteenth Celebration, working with the American Canyon Arts Foundation. Next year, we'll be celebrating our fifth year. Wait till you see what's happening. I'm already on top of that. So council, I'm asking you, please, it would be great if you could increase the budget, but I will accept what you do have. You know why? Because I made friendships, and I've been contacting people up valley, and they have become sponsors. They have been donating. I have people who are small business owners who contribute. I have some of our nonprofits within the city who contribute. So if you don't do, I don't like that subtract sign, forget about that, use that addition. And if not, we'll go where you are, because it's not gonna stop me. I know how to raise money. And so I'm looking forward to continuing to bring American Canyon's Juneteenth Celebration to American Canyon over at the Main Street Park, where I've developed a relationship with Walmart there, where we get free parking for everyone who attends. And I look forward to seeing each and every one of you here for the council meeting and watching on TV or on Zoom. Come out, because my goal for this year is to have 1,000 people in that park. So thank you for allowing me to come back and give a presentation on why we should continue to have our Juneteenth Celebration in the city of American Canyon. And I'll take whatever questions you may have, council.
Thank you for that energy. That was a lot of energy there, Brenda.
Any questions from council, clarifying questions? Councilmember Oro?
Yeah, Brenda, thank you for doing this. It really is, you know, listen, I was in college before I knew what Juneteenth was. And it was only because my roommates weren't a black fraternity. I had to know what Juneteenth was. I learned a lot, but, you know, and then it's remarkable how many people actually don't know about it still to this day. And I think it's a very educational thing, and it's also a great celebration. I've been out there a couple of times.
Yes, you have.
So, but I do want to just get a little bit more about the numbers. You know, like, we invest in things, and we want them to succeed, and you guys took that $25,000 and straight, stretched it for three years.
Three years.
Which is awesome, which is great, and you've been building those relationships. But what are we gonna do different this time, or what are you gonna do different in the future to get yourself to 1,000 or to be better than competing events?
I'm already doing that, because I started preparing for Juneteenth last year when the the last Juneteenth has, was ending. You know, it takes you really to be successful in anything that you do, it takes you about five years to get it together. It doesn't happen overnight. Now what's happening is people are calling me, asking me if they, if I have space for them to be one of the entertainers, if I have space for them to be one of the vendors, because we have vendors where you can see African-American, you know, products and and purchase them. And so we have that. They're asking me, do you have the paper ready, the paperwork ready? So we're, we're doing that. It takes time for the word to get out. Last year, when Fairfield had their event, they called me already and said, oh, we're not having our event, we're only doing it every two years, so we're coming to assist you. We're coming to volunteer with you. We're gonna help you promote. And I've already started doing that legwork that it takes to get the word out. Now, what I'm hoping is that we continue with the fundraising efforts. We have what we call VIP seating, where you are under a tent. Those chairs are only $30. You can sit under a tent in VIP seating and receive a glass of wine. Okay, that's a way of raising money. So it's all kind of things that we can do to increase. The word is out. People know about what's happening in American Canyon with Juneteenth. How do I know that? Because I interact with Vallejo. I interact with Fairfield. I enter out with all the other cities who are in Benicia, who gives the Juneteenth Celebration. We all call one another to make sure that we're not planning anything on the same day. Why did I choose Father's Day? I'm glad you asked. I selected Father's Day because Juneteenth is a family celebration in the African-American community. It's a family celebration, getting together, eating together, enjoying music together, and it's led by the fathers. So when I was seeing people at an event I went to, they said, I'm coming to your Juneteenth, is it still on Father's Day? It only took me three years for people to understand that Juneteenth is on Father's Day. You have to make something easy for people to remember in order for them to continue coming out. So that's why I selected Father's Day. One, because it's a family event, and two, I wanted people to remember American Canyon's Juneteenth Celebration. So yes, it's on Father's Day, and we continue. And what people have started to do is to start planning to have their family activity on that Father's Day. Why? Because it's a free day in the park with music. You don't get that much music for free. Free 99? Come on now. Yeah, so now they can plan around that and have their family gathering and come to our free concert, and that's what it is, because there's lots of music, and get educated at the same time. Did I answer your question?
I believe so, yes.
Probably forgot, I know.
Yeah.
I'm a little long-winded, sorry about that.
Yeah. You know, thank you for, and I know you put a lot of energy into it. So I, it's just a concern that I have with regards to wanting it to succeed.
Yes, and I don't know if everyone got the report to see what those numbers were. It started out, we had over 1,000 people the first year. People get excited, and and they did come out. We did drop down a little the second year, and last year, we dropped way down because we were competing against someone with bigger entertainment. And let me tell you, the entertainment I bring is top-notch entertainment. Why is it top-notch entertainment? Because I interact with a lot of entertainers. I do a lot of activities, and a lot of them come here to perform, and we're not paying them what they usually get. Why? Because they're doing it for me to come and help make this a success that it is. And then for the rest of the year, I have to be going emceeing different events for them, so.
Brenda, real quick, some of the things that you're not telling everybody that that I think they should know as well. You did this the last three years while you were caring for your husband, while you were caring for your mom, and while you were caring for the ladies in red as well. So you were doing a lot of things within the community. So I appreciate what you bring to that, to to our community. And as an African-American myself, you know, we only had this federal holiday for the last three years, you know? So that's another piece of history that we're making. And we were one of the first cities that said that we were going to celebrate that. And I thought that was a monumental moment in our entire community. I think even people in Napa County were just still wondering, what was Juneteenth? You know? But they quickly learned about that. And again, we always preach about educating our community. This is a perfect opportunity to show that our diversity in a way that we're celebrating. You will always have my support for Juneteenth. I can't say that for the rest of the council, but I can say that for me, because I know the value that it brought to to my family alone, and I thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
With that, Vice Mayor Joseph.
Before you say that, I do want to mention that Visit Napa Valley, they add us on their schedule of activities, of things to do in the Napa Valley. So if someone was looking through Visit Napa Valley, going online and see it, you will see our Juneteenth Celebration there.
Well, first of all, I want to do a disclosure. Brenda does all the heavy lifting, but it is in conjunction with the American Canyon Arts Foundation, and I'm its president. I'm not getting paid, never have, actually more of a negative outflow of cash, but that's another thing. So I just want everybody to understand. So I'm supportive, obviously, but, you know, I just want people to understand. Now, having said that, I also want to emphasize that from the initial event, Brenda was able to, as you mentioned, work with Walmart, and not only did they provide us with some free traffic or free parking, but ultimately began to contribute financially as well as to throw in some free water and ice, which is really critical. And what makes that important is, in the first year, we had a pretty healthy expense, about $3,000 or $4,000 for a shuttle service, because we were parking across the highway. And so that coup alone shaved about three grand off the cost, and so instead of $25,000, $26,000, it became more like 22 or 23, but it also added about two grand worth of of revenue. So those are the kinds of things that Brenda has been able to do, basically just work in the crowd, which is what she does as a rule. So I, I just want to emphasize, we have operated as, you know, on a, you know, as we usually do, on as thin a budget as you can imagine. So any contribution the city contributes, they can, they know for sure they're getting their money's worth, because we don't have much in the way of overhead. So, again, I, I think the program's great. I think each year, you figure out something new. Last year, you tapped into the Marines, which solved a lot of problems, because in the early years, old guys like me were doing most of the moving stuff around, and now I get to watch and say, yeah, put it over there. So lots of improvements, some of which don't have any benefit to the community, but I can assure you, made me feel good, so.
And I'm glad you mentioned the Marines, because our Marines that's over right across from the park participate and help load in and load back out for me. I went in and asked and told them what I was doing, and they said, oh, we would love to help. And they were there bright and early, right with me, and and they set up a tent, not a tent, but tables, and they stayed for the entire time and then helped break down. So I, that's what I do. I develop relationships and let people see why they should participate and don't miss out. And we have good security. The security staff that I bring in ensures that the people's safety, so they don't have to worry about it. They can sit there and relax, and their kids can play, and they can enjoy, because we have security. I brought my security team out to meet the chief, and I think he's quite pleased with my selection. And if he's not, he's pretty good at keeping a secret.
Well, thank you, Brenda. If there's no other questions from the council, I'd like to open it for public comment on item number 15.
I did want to hear from Brenda, did I miss him?
I look forward to attending, Brenda, and you have my support.
And my lady dear?
Happy to support.
I just wanted to see some comments from you.
I remember going over to that spot and listening to these wonderful bands that she brought down. She is a true, true American Canyon resident that loves our community. We love her, and I thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
You're wonderful.
Thank you.
So there's a lot of reasons to thank Brenda for what she's done in the community, but I'm, I'm just really happy that we are able to celebrate such a great thing with the efforts of such a great woman. But it also reminds me how important it is for the diversity that we have in this city. That's one of our strengths, even though, and I'm sorry, it's political, but Trump is getting, trying to get rid of diversity everywhere, and it's even more important that we honor it here for us. I fully support what you're asking for. Maybe you should ask for a little more money. Maybe they give you a little more money. And I want, I want to, I want one of those VIP seats.
Wonderful.
Thank you, Joan.
You can go online and purchase it at the website for American Canyon Arts Foundation.
Yes, sir.
I'm a former Napa woman who has lots of X as one, and I would be happy if you used your wife.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, I got my eye on him. He's not going anywhere. Oh, thank you so much. Thank you.
Frank, you gonna come up to the speaker, please?
Hi, my name is Frank Coppola, and I thank you for all that you do. I've lived in American Canyon for six years now, and this is the first time I've heard about the Juneteenth Celebration. about the Juneteenth celebration. So perhaps the question is not to her, what is she going to do to make this work, is to the city. Why cannot, why can't, what is the city going to do to make us know about it? Because this is the first time in six years that I've heard about this. So perhaps there could be more publicity, or I'm sure you got a million ideas.
Wow.
Yeah. Yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you, and thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
That's definitely one area that needs to be worked. This year, I plan to do Juneteenth like it's a campaign, going door-to-door, finding out. Do you know about this? Leaving flyers. So yes, thank you for bringing that up. That's one thing we do need to do better, getting it out to our community. Thank you for bringing it up.
In that vein, I think we're also going to take advantage of the city's new, what I'm going to call a banner system, where for a nominal fee, we can put up four-foot by eight-foot banners at the library, the parks. So that'll be certainly something we take advantage of this year, in part because it's available this year. So you'll get a lot more local recognition probably the month before, so people will know where and when and why.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any other handles.
I do have one on, one online.
Yes.
Justin, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, my dear. This is Justin. I'm going to go take a bath to memory Brenda Black. I think I remember her, I was meeting her at Safeway Park Lot a year ago. And I'm going to shout out Brenda Black. She is married, she amazing, good support, she good, I could see, and she is a good person. Let's keep this going. Good work, Brenda Black.
Thank you, Justin. Anyone else online? No? Let's return to council for, oh, Beth.
Good evening, Beth Marcus again. Many of you probably don't remember, but way before Juneteenth, Brenda used to host Sundays, or what was it called, something?
Music in the Park.
Music in the Park over at Main Street. And that's how I got it started. And it was really a great thing to do, and I thank you for that. I met Brenda a long time ago, I won't say where. But, yeah, Mark. But I want to thank her for all that she's done. But she did start it with, on Sundays, and it was a great thing to come out, sit, enjoy with your family, listen to the music, and just thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Any other comment? Seeing none, I'd like to close com, open, open public comment and return back to the council for any additional statements, questions, or motion.
Mayor, it's not a, not an action item tonight, but I would like maybe just some direction from you all. Would you like us to bring back a resolution next time with a twenty-five thousand dollar appropriation? You want to bring singular appropriations each year? Different number? I'm happy to fill in the blank in the resolution, but some consensus around that. I don't need an actual vote, though.
Yeah, so it was a recommendation, and then they would come back and bring it back. It's what the action recommendation tonight is to receive information, provide direction to staff regarding a request from the American Canyon Arts Foundation in support of the Juneteenth Festival.
I would actually ask that we, part of that recommendation be that we increase that twenty-five thousand dollars for that three-year period. Seeing that, when I talk to people from the Solano area, particularly the Vallejo area, they tell me that they're competing with Brenda Knight. They don't want to compete with Brenda Knight. So I believe two cities already have said they're not going to do it because of your program and the people that you're going to have supporting you. So I think that alone will increase your, the people coming out to this year's Juneteenth. I believe in you and what you're doing for Juneteenth, for our community, for one. And two, I get a lot of people tell me they also feel safe. So that's a contributor to you, chief, as well. The people come to our city to enjoy our city, let's get a, let's get something to get our identity out there. So I would say if we could increase that twenty-five thousand for the three-year period or the next three years, that we do that as well. But I also employ and reach out to the residents of American Canyon to also support. You know, and I'll do my part, and I hope the rest of the council do their part to put the word out. We all know how to campaign. Ain't nobody up here that don't know how to campaign. And I think we'll campaign for you, Brenda. So with that, I have a red light going for Councilmember Oro.
Yeah. I, I actually want to see, see it succeed too, but I was thinking in the opposite way, actually. And to figure out funding, just because the numbers are going down a little bit, I want to give you enough to succeed for this year and to see how those numbers go, and that we revisit this year. But I also have a bigger concern as a council as a whole. There's plenty of events and community groups across the city that are always asking for money. This is the one that's a little bit different in terms of how we go about giving this money out. And I just want to, there's Little League, there's Meet Me in the Streets, everyone has a different, and there's Parks Foundation stuff. I just want to be fair and diplomatic to how we as a council are thinking about how we contribute city funds across the board to the community. And I'm not trying to take that away from Brenda and Juneteenth or whatever's happening here right now. But, you know, what I don't want to be is a case-by-case basis for the community to come here and make a plea. And I don't know what our official policy is on that. And this isn't actually for Brenda Knight and Juneteenth, it's actually going to the Arts Foundation, which is a well-established community group that's been here for a very long time, led by a great, great president as well. And so, you know, that's my only concern. And so my thing is to, to give, I, I would lean towards giving Brenda a budget that is healthy enough for this next year. Show us what you can do, because I know you can do it. And if it's successful again, then let's talk about an increased budget then.
Can I have an opportunity just to interject something here? Because I don't want anyone leaving tonight thinking that the money is going to be donated to Brenda Knight Events. It is not. Money is donated to a nonprofit organization. That nonprofit organization is the American Canyon Arts Foundation. I, in turn, am a consultant who puts on the event and do the additional fundraising event for the event. But no money from the city is paid or check written is not given to Brenda Knight Events. And it's very important that people understand that, because that's how rumors get started. And, and any type of money from a city organization is only donated or given or supported or sponsored to a nonprofit organization. No citizen can come up and ask for a donation for anything that they are doing as a citizen. It's as a nonprofit organization. So I just wanted to make sure everybody got that and understand that clearly. Because I kind of, David, when you was doing that, I was kind of saying, oh, it's kind of sound like they want to write that check to Brenda Knight. And I didn't want anyone leaving with that question in their mind saying, ooh, oh, so that's what she do. Okay, so I wanted to get that clarification.
And I was, I was clear when I said it goes to the actual Arts Foundation.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah, so I was, I stated that and I even committed the president.
See, I'm sitting here looking at faces. I, I read faces. And so whenever I see there is a little question in somebody's face, I just like to clarify it, so they can leave here feeling good.
Thank you, thank you. Vice Mayor Joseph?
Yeah, I, I, I'm, because of my role on the foundation, I don't want to be a big advocate one way or the other, although I'm certainly appreciative of continued financial support. But I did want to address Councilmember Oro's comment about, you know, how do we allocate funds? As some of you may recall, several years back, we, the city would allocate a pot of money that the Parks and Community Services Commission would, would solicit input from community groups, analyze it, make recommendations to the council. And that is certainly a worthwhile process that I would love to see resurrected. And that would certainly become a mechanism by which, you know, any community group would have more or less an equal footing as far as making their pitch for city support. So although I appreciate what level of support we can get tonight for Juneteenth, I also think it's not a bad idea to maybe bring back that community group funding process, maybe revise it or whatever, but, but bring it back as, as a mechanism by which to kind of be that fair process that I think Councilmember Oro was referring to, and I certainly am sympathetic to.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Holly, are you, do you have enough information to move forward with a resolution for a future agenda item?
Let me maybe offer a suggestion. And speaking specifically, so we don't have, you know, a policy per se about handing out, and we do hand out money to, if I want to see, nonprofit organizations, not individuals. So totally clear on that. And, you know, we don't have, what we've done, you know, and this is actually pre-COVID, believe it or not, but we would have a particular line item in the, in the city budget. My memory serves, it was roughly around fifty thousand dollars. We would do an annual sort of call for requests, and then, yeah, would go through the planning, sorry, through the Parks and Community Services. They would kind of evaluate proposals, and then various nonprofit groups would submit those proposals, and then ultimately some recommendations would come to council. Council would make those kinds of decisions. So we, if that's an interest, that sort of policymaking is an interest of the council, we'd look at bringing that back as a part of twenty-five, twenty-six budget, and maybe a topic for our discussion on Friday, quite frankly, as far as, you know, and a key initiative in twenty-five, twenty-six. So we could do that. That doesn't get us to Juneteenth for twenty-twenty-five, though. That's coming up, you know, just this particular June. So, you know, the reason that we outlined the staff report the way we did was to say the initial chunk got us three years, we could do another chunk for another three years, we could do a one-year piece that gives us for June of twenty-five. So if, if there's interest in some policymaking around this, the council could appropriate a number that would be for June of twenty-five, and then say prospectively, we're going to develop this, you know, this practice now of budgeting in twenty-five, twenty-six for, you know, for a sort of a community-wide call for, for funding programs, and, and then roll subsequent requests into that larger, that larger practice. That'd be one way to, to kind of handle that, so that all groups feel like they have a seat at the table for that. So that could be a possibility. I don't know if that kind of navigates, you know, what I'm, what I'm hearing from the council.
Any feedback from anyone on council?
So Jason, if we decided to allocate funds for this year for June twenty-twenty-five, would that be a resolution to be made tonight? And then, of course, talk about policy moving forward later on? How'd we go about that?
No, tonight it would just be something like, hey, Jason, we want to allocate and make sure Juneteenth twenty-twenty-five goes well. We're going to allocate XYZ for that purpose, and then we'd like you in the future in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget to put some money in there for, you know, community grant programs. And then we'll talk about the policy around what those awards or allocations and that whole solicitation process is going to look like. And that would evolve over, you know, upcoming months, and then, you know, eventually council will be involved in that sort of policymaking. So tonight it would just be, give me some direction on, do you want me to bring back something on April first that's targeted just for Juneteenth twenty-twenty-five? And then we would do a, a small consent item just for that targeted purpose. And then we would evolve the, the additional policymaking, you know, over the next fiscal year.
Can I get someone to make a motion or a recommendation?
Tell you what, I'm going to make this recommendation. Council can decide what to do. I want to see this succeed. I'm going to make a recommendation that Jason come back to us with a policy supporting the Juneteenth event in the amount of ten thousand dollars for one year. And then, you know, I think that if we took that average over twenty-five thousand for three years, that's above normal, what you would normally get if it was just one year, right? I think it's seventy-five hundred. A seed money, and let's see how it goes. And then we can come back, and if it's super successful, we'll figure that out. And obviously, we need to have that bigger conversation. And Councilmember Jo, I mean Vice Mayor Joseph, you brought that up. I was like, yeah, we used to have this whole process. And I don't ever think it got to fifty. I don't think it was only thirty. And then I think that's where we can actually increase our community-giving budget. And I think this council's had conversations in the past, is how do we support our local nonprofits? We had that earlier today with a new nonprofit food bank. If we had some cash that we allotted every year, then we can distribute these funds to accredited nonprofits, accredited nonprofits more, more evenly, or on merit, really. So that would be my recommendation to all. Or motion.
Can I get a second?
That's a motion, I second that motion.
Yeah, and again, we're not going to take action tonight, but I hear this kind of recommendation, and I see some nods at the heads, and what I'm looking for is to bring this back on consent at our next meeting and have it not get pulled from consent and have there not be a conversation. So if, if y'all are sort of nodding the head there, then what we'll do on the first of April is bring back a reso, and we'll do, it's a budget-related item, so it'll be a reso. It'll be ten thousand dollars, it'll be for Juneteenth. Money goes to the Arts Foundation if it's Juneteenth twenty-twenty-five. And kind of embedded in that recommendation, but as, as part of a work plan that we're working on, is let's develop a policy for our community grants and, and have that unfold over the coming months, so that all groups feel like they have a seat at the table.
Yeah, I would certainly support that effort as well. And promise not to pull it from consent in two weeks.
Well, you're free to do whatever you want, but I'm not, I don't have that much power.
Thank you, Councilmember Oro, for that recommendation.
Thank you, council, and I look forward to seeing you next month.
Thank you, Brenda.
Perfect, thank you, Brenda.
Okay. So our next item and the final business item is number sixteen, one-six-six-one Green Island Road, that property. Mr. Holly, would you like to start us off?
Thank you, Mayor and council. The following is a council-requested item from our meeting two weeks ago. There's a former vineyard property on sixteen-sixteen, sixteen-sixty-one Green Island Road. It's currently unincorporated in Napa County. It's adjacent to American Canyon's municipal boundary on the northwest side, currently outside of our sphere of influence and the city-county urban limit line. A map of that, of those boundaries and, and the property is on page two-fifty-two of the packet. A little bit of information, what are these terms? Sphere of influence, urban limit line, and so on and so forth. The sphere of influence is something that's part of the government code. It's something that the Napa County Local Agency Formation Commission, also known as LAFCO, defines as a plan for the probable physical boundary and service area of a local government agency. In this case, American Canyon's SOI is what LAFCO has, has determined. This property is located outside of that, and there's a request by the property owner of sixteen-sixty-one Green Island Road to be included, to have that SOI, if you will, expanded or the boundary amended to include this property. The urban limit line is something really a creature of creation. This is something that Napa County and the city of American Canyon agreed to in two thousand and eight. It's not required by any reason other than the two parties, the city and the county, wanted to have that urban limit line. And it can be changed anytime the city and the county decide they want to change it. And if we don't change it, it goes away simply because of the agreement expires in twenty-twenty-thirty. So a couple of different lines there. Wanted to explain that. The landowner is here tonight to kind of explain their reasoning for wanting to be included in the sphere of influence and their perspectives. This issue came up previously, roughly, I guess it was three years ago. And at the time, the city council decided to take no position on the matter. And since that time, the applicant has decided to reapply for this request with the LAFCO and is now asking for a letter of support from the city council. And so that's the matter that's brought back before the, the city council tonight. The, the property owner believes getting a letter of support from the city council would be helpful in their application to LAFCO. A couple of topics that the council might want to consider, and I'll just take a step back. I apologize, the brevity maybe of this, of the staff report, it's only a couple of pages. Given the timeframes involved, this is kind of the limits of what we had to be able to put together. So there are some topics that the council may wish to entertain. It's location and the surrounding uses. Generally, it's located in an industrial park. It's surrounded by warehouses. There's a couple of junkyards and things on the north side of Green Island Road, some other industrial properties, and then it's surrounded on its western boundary by the Napa River. On the south is the city's water reclamation facility. Currently, there are municipal services delivered. Currently, there are municipal services delivered to the property already. The city provides potable water and recycled water to the property. The American Canyon Fire Protection District provides fire and EMS services to the property. It's actually located within the fire district's sphere of influence today. There are a variety of financial and environmental considerations to consider. Generally, when properties are annexed into the city, the city eventually receives property tax from that. Those are financial considerations. There are potentially environmental considerations. We've not done any studies on that at this point in time. And partly because what we're talking about tonight isn't the discretionary action of the council. It's essentially symbolic. It's not even a ministerial act. It's really a symbolic gesture of support. So we're not required and haven't even begun to look at any of those things. Lastly, there are a couple of ballot measures that occurred. American Canyon measures J and K. Those went to the voters. Happy to talk more about, you know, potential implications for those. Actually, Measure J went to the voters. Measure K did not. It was adopted by the council. And if the council would like to go forward with this, we'll prepare a very short letter for the mayor's signature and submit it to LAFCO. LAFCO has noticed a public hearing on April 7th, where they'll be considering this matter. You know, generally, as it relates to our goals and visions and things for the city, economic development vitality, attracting and expanding diverse businesses and employment opportunities, you know, supporting this measure would align with that goal. We're not able at this point to identify the fiscal impact to the city. Again, this letter is really a symbolic gesture of the city. So this action wouldn't have any fiscal impact. You know, like I said, generally, once a property is annexed to the city, additional revenue comes to the city depending on, you know, what happens with the property. Couple of attachments, like I mentioned, on page 252 is, again, shows a map of the property. It shows the urban limit line. It shows the sphere of influence. Page 253 shows the prior letter, you know, the prior position of the city, which in a sense was no position. And at this point, I think we'd like to have opportunity for the property owner to come up and explain a little bit more about their request of the council and give them the floor to do that.
Mr. Gilbreth?
Good evening, Mayor Washington, Vice Mayor Joseph, and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Thank you, Mr. Hawley, for your staff report. That was actually very complete. I appreciate it. And I won't belabor any of those points. I can probably streamline what I was going to say. I'm Andrea Matarazzo. I'm a land use and environmental attorney. I represent the co-managers of Green Island Property LLC. My background is in land use planning, and my law practice has focused on land use issues for the past 30 years. The co-managers of Green Island Property are David Gilbreth and Ed Farver. Ed Farver is an active member of the community and has been a Napa Valley grape grower for the past 43 years. Mr. Farver serves on the board of the Queen of the Valley Medical Center and the Queen of the Valley Foundation, and is actively involved in several other community nonprofit organizations. David Gilbreth likewise is active in the community and helped incorporate the City of American Canyon. He was the lead lawyer and partial owner of the specific plan that provided land for Canyon Grammar School. And as Mr. Hawley explained, we're asking you tonight to authorize a letter of support for their landowner application to LAFCO to expand American Canyon's sphere of influence to include the 1661 Green Island Road property. We believe that this property is textbook infill, as Mr. Hawley alluded to when he described the property's boundaries. It's about 157 acres and is bordered on three sides by the City of American Canyon. It's adjacent to an existing industrial area and business park in the city. On the 20-acre property directly across the street, the city has approved a use permit for a carport, excuse me, copart auto storage facility. The northern boundary of the Green Island property is essentially contiguous to the city limit, which extends to the north for about a mile to mile and a half through an existing industrial and business park area to the Napa County Airport. You have the map in your packet, but I will just summarize additionally, the eastern boundary being contiguous also with the city limit, and the western property boundary, as Mr. Hawley pointed out, being the Napa River. The southern boundary of the property is a saltwater overflow area of the Napa River. And the property has been considered already by the Napa County Airport Land Use Commission and its land use compatibility evaluated. Recently, in December 2024, the Napa County Airport Land Use Commission adopted a new countywide airport land use compatibility plan. According to the commission, this property is suitable for a variety of infill uses. The commission's findings supersede the outdated findings from 1999 regarding the property's reasonable future uses. The city's vision has evolved as well, and that's the nature of good land use planning. Based on the present circumstances, we believe the property should be included in the city's sphere of influence to establish logical boundaries. Bringing the property into the city's sphere enables the city to chart its own course and decide the property's beneficial uses. As Mr. Hawley pointed out, none of those discretionary decisions are being presented or at issue today. This is, we're asking the city for a letter of support for a LAFCO application. It's LAFCO's responsibility to evaluate logical boundaries and the provision of services. And in terms of essential public services, Napa County has not provided any essential public services to the property and cannot reasonably do so. The city provides the property with essential public services, as Mr. Hawley summarized, and I won't take up time repeating that. Sewer service also is readily available from the city through its contiguous wastewater facility. And public utilities, electricity and gas, are available at or near the perimeter of the property. With regard to agricultural use, agriculture, the agricultural use of the property has been shown to be unsustainable. Site-specific expert evaluation of the soil and water characteristics of the property determined that the property is not suitable for any agricultural activities, and no water is available for such activities. All vines on the property have died and have been removed. The site is not suitable for cultivation and is not economically viable for grazing. And there are a number of expert reports in the record that demonstrate that. So the appropriate land use direction for this property is clear based on logical city boundaries and the property's suitability for infill uses. The proposed amendment of the city's sphere of influence will protect other truly sustainable agricultural land and will benefit both the city and the entire Napa County community. Mr. Gilbreth would like an opportunity to briefly make some additional comments and be available for questions.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen. It's been a long time to get here. Most people, but not all, of course, have seen me over the years be here. I started coming here in the early 90s, and that's why my hair is a little more gray now than it was then. I came here originally because I was a lawyer representing some of the members of your community, specifically Jack Newell Sr. and others, and I enjoyed that work. And as a result of working with Mickey, your supervisor, he asked me to lead the efforts to incorporate the city, which was successful in 1992. And it's important, I think, to tell you a little bit about that because some people are, in my view, respectfully over-concerned about the previous initiative that did not pass. Mickey called me and told me that, excuse me, the previous effort to incorporate the city failed twice. But he had a vision for a city, a city that would end up with a high school, a grammar school, a middle school, and other things. So he asked me to lead that charge. And I was a member of an investment group of the property that is on the east side of Flosden and without Jack. And I was a member on the north side where the Canyon Grammar School is located, just next door to the high school. And so we had an interest in doing this financially ultimately. But there was more than that. It was a vision to create a city for people to live in and have houses. So I went forward with Mickey. I personally retained the PhD economist from Berkeley, where I went to school, to analyze the financial viability of a city. Our groups paid for that. I went to every single Napa County Planning Commissioner, every commissioner on LAFCO, every board member, endlessly doing everything possible as the lead lawyer to incorporate this city. And I'm proud of it. In that process, there were substantial bills that were paid. None of them were paid by anybody that got into this city. We did that. We did that part of our vision, and certainly we had a self-interest in doing it. But really, what drove us more than anything was the vision. Many of the houses that people live in over there were houses that were approved that we got there. And there were people that came up and complained about the possibility that there'd be houses there. This was going to be shocking that people would actually live on some of the land and form a community. Well, it's pretty shocking to me that they held that view. In any event, we persevered. And then later in 98, the specific plan that we were part of with the same efforts failed. And Mark Joseph was there. It failed initially on the first try before LAFCO. And we didn't give up. We didn't give up on the city then, and we hope that the council doesn't give up on this now. And so we persevered. I personally, as a result of that failure, which was a little challenging to take with after all the hard work, and in the end, we persevered. I hired John Knox, who was the author, it's the Cortese-Knox Annexation Bill in the state legislature, to come to the final hearing. And he came there, and I had met with him, of course, very well-known, regaled everybody with stories with Pat Brown, because this is a long time ago, and said, and I still remember it. He said, "The purpose of all of this is to create a community that people can live in, that's sustainable with housing, industrial envelopment, development, money to finance the things that need to be financed." And I also hired other people. Everybody really reported to me. I don't mean to be egotistical about it, but I was very interested in pursuing the vision and the dream that John Michalogic set out. And so we persevered on that, and we were ultimately successful. And I wouldn't be surprised if there are people in this room that live in the houses that we got approved that ultimately were built on those lands. There were probably over 1,200 of them. I'm not sure. We don't often say other things that we did because we like a little lower profile, like everybody here might. But we actually gave the land that the Canyon Grammar School is on to, in essence, the city. And Mark Joseph did one thing better. We gave it. We didn't get a cup of coffee or a dollar. We're here to do something fabulous on this Green Island property for this community. And all we're asking is a supporting letter so that the city gets an opportunity to review whatever they want. There is no project. We have ideas. We would solicit ideas from other people so that in the end, it meets the needs of the community. That's what we're about. I come here an awful lot. I want to achieve this goal in concert with the vision that the council has, that the community has, and work even with the people that are saying we shouldn't do anything on it. I think that's wrong. I think that's not an appropriate use of a resource. We know for certain, and finally, the ag community has acknowledged it, you don't see them here tonight, that no agriculture is sustainable on that property. And as a result of the science, we've taken all the vines out. So there's no question that that is gone. And I've asked before in a presentation here or there, if anybody has contrary science, bring it forward. We also advertised the property for over five years. We have a lot of relationships with different wineries, whether that's Robert Mondavi or Sutter Home. Almost every vintner that we could find looked at this property and would not buy it, and we cannot get financing to replant, whether it's vines, fruits, nuts, whatever it is. So you have something unique. It should have been part of the city. In 1992, Mickey drew a map, and I was with him, and it included this. This was gerrymandered out. It also included where the Amazon facilities are. That was gerrymandered out. It also included, it deleted the property of Hess Laird, which we knew, talking to Mickey, was essential for a north-south corridor extension of Newell Drive. So the pressures have been on it, maybe more so than any of the people here realize, from the north government holding this back. And what is ironic to me is now, in the, right now in the present, the county government, in my opinion, is not opposing it. We don't have any letters from them. We don't have their planning director coming up foolishly and saying we need an EIR to do the different things, knowing that he's incorrect. That's gone. We have a new planning commission, a new board of supervisors. And I had three to four of the supervisors on the property. I had four commissioners. There's seven on the Airport Land Use Commission. Five of them are Napa County Planning Commissioners. I don't say that I know what their thoughts were. I say the following. My understanding of every comment and every reaction was, wow, this is a resource that should be developed. We have already spent tens of millions of dollars on the infrastructure on Devlin Road, and we're going to sit there and not realize an economy of scale? Do you realize what that means? You get no return on that when it's part of an industrial park for all reasonable purposes? Doesn't make any sense. Well, in the end, the Airport Land Use Commission voted unanimously to change completely the compatibility restrictions that basically said, we're just going to allow you to put warehouses on there and nothing else. And if you look at the report that we have on file, it clearly shows that there's all kinds of compatible uses. There can be workforce housing. There's many people here that we know that would like to work and live in the same community, and they're commuting to either Fairfield-Vacaville. There's an opportunity for that workforce housing and in a special place on the northwest border so they can look out. There's an opportunity for open space. There's an opportunity for warehousing and businesses. There's an access through these new developments, and there's an opportunity for money and reimbursement for Green Island Road improvements, which are sorely needed. And what I think is going to happen over time, and I hope it happens soon, we would take a letter of support. We would go to LAFCO. If there were, in my view, 100 lawyers taking a test and determining whether or not on the facts this property should be in the sphere of influence for the city, I think almost all, if not all, would say yes because of the logical boundaries, the infill, the provision of services, and no one else can do it. It is classically in alignment with the state law regarding spheres of influence. There's no project. All this does is turn to me, who had put a lot of time in this, and I in turn turn to someone that I think is first someone that I think is first-class in terms of developing different types of uses, and say, "Yeah, the city is willing to have you spend your own money and then come before them with your ideas and tell them what you think would be the best for the city." And they in turn would say, "This council, this community, this is what we think is appropriate." I think it's simple. I think it's important, and that's why I've spent the time here. And I would hope that the council would give us such a letter of support. It's reasonable. You don't have any obligation. We are willing to meet with all people to discuss the various uses. I wanted to take another look at my notes for a minute. I think, excuse me, there's, in the packet, there's, is the application. They call it a questionnaire, which was odd to us. That's at LAFCO. But it is, in fact, their application. It has all this information in it. And I realize there's a number of people that would like to do, I think, nothing with the property or something else. I think nothing on the property is highly inappropriate. I think something on it that's consistent with benefits to the city is extremely important for your community. And I appreciate your time. I'm not sure who else. I think there's other people. I know that the Philam Board has joined in, and they have told me essentially, if not every member of the Board is supportive. There are members here that are supported. There may be other people. And I'm also willing to listen carefully to the thoughts of other people that don't think that this is appropriate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. I'd like to return to council and ask if there are any clarified questions or concerns from the council from Mr. Gilbert or his representative.
I just have one clarifying question. The map on the packet, and I heard the description for the land, obviously, it starts at Oswald Court, Green Island Road. Does it go all the way to the river?
Mainly, but let me define that. On the, if you were to go down Green Island Road on the north side of the property, you're going to go the main distance, but not to the river. There's a small parcel down below, and it's got some sort of earth-moving equipment on it. So we don't go further in that area, that small parcel. Going south of that, down our western border, I don't know exactly where the property line is, but it's before the ditch. There's a ditch and a berm there.
And then, all the way south to the wastewater treatment plant?
All the way south on our rectangular property, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other clarifying questions?
Seeing that, I'd like to open up to public comment for item number 16. Also keeping in mind that it is now 9:23. And I'm going to ask all the speakers to at least stay within your three minutes to help us move along. Madam Clerk?
Yes. So before we start oral comments, I'm going to note that we received 30 written comments prior to the meeting, all of which were distributed out through ecomments or via email for ones that we received outside of the ecomments process. And all of the people who commented will be named in the minutes.
Thank you, madam.
I have about, one, two, three, about 10 that are in person, and I'm going to start with Patty Heidel.
I hope you can hear me. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the rest of the council, and all of you folks that are here tonight. My name is Patty Heidel, and I'm actually a member of the Napa Salano Audubon Society. And, oh, thank you, okay. And I am very concerned that a vote was taken in this community two years ago that said that they were opposed to, well, the Measure J said, "We don't want to go down this road, period." And then, now, we have this progress. It's another way of revisiting the road when the community has already made a decision about what they wanted. I wanted to just make a point about one of the attributes we have at the American Canyon Wetlands. That wetlands is just a wonderful spot. Everybody that's here knows that, and people come to visit. But Napa Salano Audubon Society has conducted, for 16 years, a project called Bird Seasons at the Wetlands. And that means that once a week, every week, for the 16 years, 2016, Audubon members and friends go out to three different sites at the Wetlands, and they do what they call a site target for birds. So at those three different sites, we count for 15 minutes, or they count, I counted a different site. But they have logged on for 16 years the species of birds that are there. This info is inputted into what we call the Nature's Notebook, and you can look it up online. And it's a project from the USA National Phenology Network. And it recognizes the data, and then it tells us over time how birds, or amphibians, or plants, anything else, is being impacted. We know that the wetlands are impacted, and we know that if we further degrade the area around them, we're going to have problems. So the reversal of Measure J from zoning agricultural to some other unlikely friendly atmosphere for our community is going to be a dearth, not only to the environment, but also to the people that live here.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, mayor, Vice Mayor. I'm Kimberly Richard, Representative for District Four on the Napa County Democratic Central Committee. But today, I am here as a Napa County resident or citizen. Napa County is home to some of 150 different species of plants and wildlife and fish that are either on the threatened or endangered list at a state or federal level. This partial of land that is in question, it is deemed for ag use, as it should remain so. It is too close to an estuary where bald eagles live, and which, as you know, or should know, are protected under the Golden Eagle Protection Act and the Migratory Bird Act. Not only is there a nesting pair, but also Swanson Hawks is also a threatened species underneath the CISA that caused that ham and its feeding ground. There is no land set aside for conservation in American Canyon. The open space provides a natural barrier, and we must protect it at all costs. As we have seen, our environment and wildlife is paying the price for humans. Please keep this land as it is meant to be, an ag land, so that what few areas are left for wildlife is kept intact. The voters have already sent a mandate of no development. There's funding out there that you could get a grant from the Wildlife Board, Commission Board. They set aside $47 million for habitat restoration. Imagine what could be done with money from a grant. There was $3.2 billion set aside in the federal grant for wetland restoration and wildlife habitat. And sir, I would gladly help you come get that money if we could keep that land, you know, as adjacent to an estuary, and let's keep it for our wildlife. And for us to enjoy, my God, very few places can you go out and watch wildlife. I sit on the Napa County Wildlife Commission. I'm one of the commission, and I have an idea for y'all's grant for your, for your city charity, and I'll tell y'all that later. But anyway, please, let's keep it.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. Thank you so much for making time for me, council members, mayor, deputy mayor. Tonight, I'm wearing the Sierra Club hat. I'm a member of the Sierra Club as are many residents here in American Canyon, but I live in American Canyon as well. And I listened to Mr. Gilbert's background, and I have a great deal of respect and empathy for him. But let me, let me speak first, if I may. The Sierra Club is strongly opposed to the development of this 157-acre parcel. We understand that the owner, David, would like it re-designated into a sphere of influence, approved by the city council. The ultimate goal is the annexation of Green Island Vineyard by the City of American Canyon from Napa, so Mr. Gilbert can then sell the property to private developers. And he's talked about why. This attempt was put before the voters in Measure J. We know that. It was rejected. And now, Mr. Gilbert wants to try a new tactic in that regard. And we just heard from the Audubon Society, "The property abuts critical wildlife habitat, the wetlands, that also buffer the increasing danger of sea level rise in the immediate area. If industrial development is approved, the threat to existing wildlife," and we just heard from, from one of our folks, "and the habitat that's critical to the very existence of such wildlife will be overwhelming. There is ample visual proof, if you go out there, that the area immediately adjacent to Green Island Vineyard is used as nesting and breeding grounds for various wildlife." And like the Audubon Society, the Sierra Club strongly urges the city council to take whatever steps necessary to protect this property by creating a conservation easement that will provide open space for existing wildlife and will also serve to protect against sea level rise. How do we do that? Instead of fast-tracking this whole issue, the American Canyon City Council should instead work with conservation groups and the state government to apply for some of the recently approved $10 billion by Proposition 4 earmarked for various conservation measures, including...
Sir, I'm sorry, you're out of time.
I'm out of time?
You're out of time. Yep, three minutes.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. Just to note, there's a timer on the podium, and it also has lights. When you're in time, it's green. You can see the countdown. When it marks yellow, you have 30 seconds to wrap up.
Thank you. Good evening, city council again. Yvonne Beginsky. I'd like to address a very important aspect of this conversation, and that is, in 2030, in five years, it'll come under the auspices of American Canyon anyway. In those five years, we can develop a conservation plan, habitat easement on that property. We have five years to look at all the options. We have agricultural easements available through the federal government. We have statewide easements. I sat on a webinar yesterday for a full hour learning about the Prop IV issue, conservation easement money. We can get together the county, the RCD, various environmental groups. We could come up with a plan for that property. Mr. Gilbert, I know, I know that you want to make money on your investment. I know, and I went through all the papers about your investment, and I learned that in 2017, you tried to sell that piece of property for $17 million. I know that in 2021, you tried to sell it for $6.5 million. So there was a considerable drop in your ability to sell that property, which then, of course, you went to another option. Nobody's going to be growing grapes soon. They are pulling grapevines out all over the state. There's been a huge drop in the grapevine market. Grapes are no longer going to be planted at the rate they were 10, 15 years ago. You need to consider that as well. I heard you say several things up here, and I don't want to challenge you on every detail. I would like to work with you. I would like to say, "Let's sit down and do a conservation plan. Let's get you some of your..."
Ms. Beginsky, can you address the council?
I'm sorry.
Not Mr. Gilbert, please.
Not Mr. Gilbert. Thank you. I'm sorry. I would like to be able to sit down and say, "What is a fair return on investment? What is this property assessed at? What would Mr. Gilbert be willing to work with regarding funding? If his, if his provision is to earn a return on his profit, what would be a fair return? And how could we, as a community, make sure he does this? Martinez just did this with their, with their estuary property. Other communities have bought it. There is money for land acquisition. We haven't explored it. Frankly, two weeks ago, I didn't expect to be back up here, and I would like to make that offer to all of you. In five years, it's going to come under the auspices of American Canyon. Anyway, what's the rush? Let's come up with a plan. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Beginsky.
Good evening, mayor, and the honorable city council members. My name is Joey Palmer, resident of American Canyon. How's everyone?
Good. Tired.
Tired. As a resident of American Canyon, I support the Green Island Vineyard Annexation Proposal. I regard this an opportunity for us as a responsible advancement that harmonizes economic progress with governmental, thank you, governmental, environmental governance. I also believe preserving natural spaces is important, and equally important is fostering a sustainable economy, especially on this project. And I therefore propose totally planned economic and environmental stewardship on this property. I am into protections of wetlands and wildlife habitats while urban planning strategies allowing responsible use of this land. The city and the developer can collaborate to ensure preservation efforts as a top priority. I can see a business park. A worker housing will create jobs, boost local businesses, and generate tax revenues for community services and projects. American Canyon, in its growth and development strategy to enhance economy and quality of life, focuses on delivering services. Capital projects, economic development potentially can be affected because of lack of business opportunity and population growth, because the whole Napa County is projected to see employment growth averaging only 1.1% per year between 2024... twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight. And this is the reason why we need this project. It will affect our economic balance in American Canyon. In the next few years, aligning this project with American Canyon's allows for managed, intentional growth rather than piecemeal reactionary development. And lastly, the defeat of Measure J in twenty twenty-two does not mean the conversion should end permanently. Circumstances change, times has changed. Revising this proposal with fresh perspective can lead to a compromise, just like what Ms. Yvonne is saying, that benefits both our community and entertain robust environmental stewardship. I therefore urge the honorable city council to consider writing a letter to LAFCO for the long-term benefits for this development and work with Mr. David Gilbert to create a plan that supports both economic progress with ecological responsibility. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Hugh, Hugh Marquez?
Good evening, City Council, Vice Mayor, uh, Mayor. Um, I'm here, the, the proposal that's, that's supposed to be taken is whether you give a letter of recommendation for this project. Um, the voters spoke once, two years ago, on what you should be doing. They spoke that they did not want this to happen. So my recommendation to you is to vote what the voters did two years ago, when they said they did not want this to occur. Thank you.
Thank you, Hugh.
Jeanette Goyet?
Good evening, Mayor Washington, and city council members and members of the community. My name is Jeanette Goyet, and I live here in American Canyon. I am here to speak in opposition to the request by Green Island Vineyard investor, David Gilbert, asking for the property to be annexed by the city and therefore eventually changing the zoning of the property from agricultural to industrial. Um, since American Canyon City Council is very pro-development, I assume it will become industrial. Two years ago, as has been said, American Canyon voters voted down Measure J. If Measure J had passed, supported by the developers, the doors would have opened to industrial development, um, for example, more warehouses. This area touches on the precious wetlands that many in American Canyon residents use daily for exercise and peace, peace. According to the Audubon Society, there have been sightings of many rare birds along the wetlands. The wetlands attract visitors from many places. Wetlands play a critical role in the ecosystem as it supports migrating fire waterfall, waterfowl, um, spawning and rearing habitat for fish, including fish that are endangered. I've learned that the birds, the fish, and other wildlife will not just move on down the river or across the way. Their home will be cemented over and they will not survive. With the climate crisis being of utmost concern, we should take every opportunity to protect our land, plants, and animals, and the humanly animals who live here, too. I urge the city council to respect and honor the vote of two years ago regarding Measure J. Keep the one hundred and fifty-seven acres property open space, so important to healthy living for wildlife and humans. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Jeanette.
Sarah Shiritz?
Hello, council. I'm, um, new at this, so forgive me if I'm a little bit nervous while I'm speaking. My name is Sarah Shiray, and I am a homeowner and resident of Napa County, and I visit the wetlands in American Canyon regularly. I love nature photography, and that's part of how I ended up coming here tonight, was to speak on behalf of the wildlife and animals. And what a beautiful and precious commodity American Canyon and Napa County have as a whole. I certainly moved here for the quality of life and the natural beauty. And it, uh, I think this is one of the most beautiful places I've ever been. So it, it feels very personal, um, because I love being here. This is, but listening tonight, uh, you know, I feel moved by the attempt to circumvent the voters, the process, and the will of the community and the general plan. I was educated in, uh, urban planning, though that's not what I do for a living. I did get a degree in urban planning. And, uh, you know, plans are amazing. That's about balancing the different needs of the community, but it only works if we, like, really take it seriously. It's part of what makes places like, you know, Tokyo and New York City wonderful to visit, because somebody had a vision, and then they held fast. They didn't give in just because someone was going to make a lot of money. Well, the benefit of one at the expense of everyone else. I haven't heard anything tonight that convinces me that this would be a benefit to me as a citizen or someone who likes to be, uh, here. It, I didn't hear any clear benefit to the community over time by changing the zoning, circumventing the will of the voters, and rushing this through for, I just heard that it's going to, uh, benefit one person while, uh, I did, I don't know how, I didn't hear any clear plan for anyone else. Um, the gentleman did say that it was bordered by American Canyon on three sides, and I did look at the map, and it's not bordered on four sides. So if it's not a square, then we can, it's more not in American Canyon than it actually is in American Canyon.
You still have thirty seconds.
Thank you. I would like to implore the council to, um, protect and serve the community and follow the will of the voters. I see those people, uh, when I'm in the wetlands, they're fishing, they have their children, they're pushing their baby strollers, they're riding their bikes, they're taking photos, they're walking their dogs, they're happy to live here, and I'm happy here. So please protect this for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Eunice?
Madam Clerk, before we call the next person up, um, it is now a little less than fifteen minutes to ten, and our city council protocol, uh, requires us to, uh, end city council meetings at ten o'clock. Uh, however, with the city council's approval, we could continue. And I'm going to open it up to my colleagues to, uh, ask, shall we continue? And I will start with the Vice Mayor.
I, I think we need to hear everyone and, and resolve this issue, so I'm willing to stay up late.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, City Council Member Oro?
We haven't had a post-ten o'clock meeting in a long time. Let's do it.
There's always a first. City Council Member La Matina?
Yes, let's continue.
City Council Member Cruz?
Agreed. Let's, uh, continue and finish this.
Then it's unanimous, uh...
You called it.
It's unanimous, so we will continue.
We did, because we came in early.
Yeah, we came in.
We came in. Okay, so Madam Clerk, can you provide us the next speaker, please?
Yes. Uh, Eunice Malley?
Oh, City Council, thank you so much for allowing people to come and make comments about this serious project. Um, I'm asking you to please not support this project. Do not write the letter. Um, please preserve the wetlands. It's very interesting. When I read about this project, I saw that it's, uh, the area affected is, is like a long rectangular, rectangle. And then to one side to the left, it's like an arm goes out, and that's the wetlands. Why are they touching the beautiful wetlands? Make it just, if you have to do something, which I don't agree with, but if, you know, leave the wetlands out of it, okay? Um, the wetlands were created years ago by, uh, your Congressman, Mike Thompson. He's still in office. It's one of the things that, um, he did for your community, which was, I think, really fantastic. I personally live in Vallejo. I visit the wetlands at least once a week. Um, it's, it provides, um, health to me. There's something about being out in nature, and several of you have alluded to that as well, that it, it's just a wonderful feeling. Living in Vallejo, I can't, there's nothing safe there. I can't walk alone in any park in Vallejo. Uh, the, the policeman left. That's too bad. Was going to try to talk to him, but anyway. Um, you know, I can't walk alone there, and I like to walk alone. And so the wet, I feel very safe in American Canyon. And listening to you all speak this evening and hearing the police chief, I thought, God, you know, I should move to American Canyon. Although, you know, I love Vallejo for other reasons. But anyway, um, putting a warehouse or something in the wetlands, um, it'll just ruin the peaceful, healthy atmosphere. Um, it'll invite other industrial projects to go there. I mean, it's just crazy. I don't, I don't understand. Um, so please preserve it. A warehouse can be built anywhere. I mean, it doesn't have to be in a beautiful area like, like the wetlands here. So why, why ruin it? And then I, I would definitely miss, like, the pumpkins that are put out in Halloween, you know, along the side there when you enter. There's all those, uh, well, anyway, I really like those. So please preserve this space for the humans, like myself, as well as for the wildlife there that we like to observe. And, and they, they give us so much, so much hope that, you know, creatures can get along, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Eunice.
Karen Fritz?
Karen Fritz, Council, Mayor, everyone, public. I have to ditto on about ninety-nine point nine percent of what everyone else has already said. We voted on Measure J. That's what we are allowed to do. We vote. It's our right. And we did it. And we vote on a lot of other things. But I have to agree with these folks. If there's other options for the one hundred and fifty-seven acres out there, then perhaps that's something that needs to be looked into. If you can get a grant, and this gentleman can get his money that he would like to get for his property, which he should, then I think that should be explored. I think that would be an awesome idea. It sounds like a lot of people had some great ideas up here and the options to go along with them. And I, too, enjoy the wildlife. As a matter of fact, I don't see near the bunny rabbits anymore out there. And that's because of development. So we need to keep that in mind. And if there's two nesting pairs of eagles out there, yahoo! I'd love to watch them in person instead of on my laptop. But, you know, we need to consider these things. And it's not just for the right now. We have to think about the future. When we're long gone, and we have kids here that have kids. So please, keep all of those items in mind. And again, hopefully there can be another way that this gentleman can recoup his money that he spent on this land, as all of us would like to do someday with all of ours. But please, it is a serious matter, and we did vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Zoe Siegel?
Hello again. Uh, I'm Zoe Siegel. Once again, I'm the Director of Climate Resilience at Green Belt Alliance. Um, and I'm here today to urge you to not sign this, or not support this letter. It's clear that the landowners are, you know, upstanding citizens who have contributed a lot of positive change to American Canyon, specifically the contribution to housing elsewhere. I think that's really, really great. But that's not what you're voting on today. And I'm not here to talk about the birds or the fish. It's, it's clear that this is a decision with intention to make positive financial changes for the city, but I actually believe it would do the opposite. In two thousand twenty-two, voters overwhelmingly rejected Measure J. Well, they, they rejected Measure J, um, and I, uh, made it clear that this land should remain or become protected. Moving forward with any action that contradicts the vote really undermines public trust and, and puts the financial future of American Canyon, American Canyon residents at risk. So let's talk about flooding, not in the distant future, but in our lifetime. I noticed that there wasn't a flood map included in the report. I did include a small one in the public letter, public comment letter I submitted. This land will flood if it does not already, and right now it acts as a natural buffer, absorbing floodwaters and protecting nearby homes and businesses. If it's developed, we lose that protections. And when an extreme weather event hits, those costs will fall directly on homeowners, business owners, and taxpayers. Insurance rates are on the rise, and properties will eventually lose value, and the flood damage will bring massive repair costs. Right now, there's, uh, you know, you're not actually making a vote on the zoning change, just to vote to start the process. But once you open that door, it will be much harder to close. Future annexation could lead to industrial development that destroys habitat, increases flooding risks, and leaves residents paying the price for the decisions made today. This is an hypothetical. We've already seen the devastation that unchecked development brings to flood-prone areas all over the Bay Area. If this land is paved over, who will be responsible when the homes and businesses are left underwater? So tonight, I ask you to not sign the letter and to honor the two thousand twenty-two voter mandate to keep this land protected. You were elected to protect the future of this community and not to pass costs and consequences on to the next generation. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thanks, Zoe.
That's all the speaker cards I have. I do have one hand raised online.
Okay.
Uh, go ahead, Justin.
Thank you, Teresa. Uh, good evening. Again, it's Justin Hall. Uh, I'm here in American, what's thirty-six, thirty-six year, or thirty-eight year. Um, yeah, I think I was a member of Green Island. Um, I do want to keep that place open and make it nice or make it a little, um, um, a bell, building out in there, but I want to see that open. Um, I've been here in the city for nineteen-nine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. We still have another speaker.
Fran, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry, I came a little late and didn't put in a card. But, uh, yeah, I'm here to represent the Napa Valley-
Please, sir, can you give me your name and your-
Jake Rugit.
Jake Rugit.
I live in Napa. I'm here representing the California Native Plant Society, the Napa Valley chapter. Uh, I'm here to support protecting the Green Island Vineyard site as, at Napa Canyon Wetlands as an upland buffer. Historically, this area included a transitional sub-alkaline grassland community, and that's part of the reason why it's not working agriculturally. It has been isolated by a levee and ditch, but this could and should be restored. Most of this vegetation type has been lost to development and invasive species. An uncommon tar plant and other halophytes live here and support other rare animal species that are dependent on this type of habitat. Transitional grasslands also provide habitat to migratory birds, including species of geese, willets, blackbirds. The American Canyon Wetland area is an incredibly rich habitat for waterfowl. This area also provides habitat for the bald eagle, burrowing owl, and loggerhead strike, all species of concern documented on the site. We have an opportunity, an important opportunity, to do the right thing for the environment here. Let's not, let it slip away. Please do not annex this land for industrial development. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Fran?
You want me to go?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Fran Lemus, uh, speaking. Um, back in nineteen ninety-two, when we incorporated, we asked this, uh, the incorporation committee, asked for nine miles for our city. We only received three miles. So for three miles in our city, we don't have, uh, we've done a wonderful job. We don't have a long, a lot to grow on, but we have, I think, uh, established a beautiful city. Uh, the people that live here, all you new people, love it. I love it. Everybody that's old timers love it, loves it. So, uh, by, by only getting three miles for our city, it doesn't leave much room for improvements or to, to build, uh, other kinds of projects. Now, this particular piece of land is next to our, our original land, and it's, LAFCO does- does mandate that it, it butts up against someone. Anyway, to get to the point, Measure J should never have happened. You city council people had a right to approve that. So as far as Green Island Road, there's a ton, there's five miles from the beginning of Green Island Road to the bridge, and there's plenty of, plenty of open space. It's not going to be developed, but a landowner does have a right to develop his property. And I think all of us that own a house in American Canyon, Canyon, have a right to what we want to do with our property. So you can't take it away from them. So I support what he wants to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. Sophia? You're gonna have to beat Joan. Joan at the finish line. Joan Bennett.
That would be I. Interesting history about the beginning of the city of American Canyon. Since I was on the very first city council, I can attest how difficult it was to get things going and operating and so on and so forth. And over time, we've done a really wonderful job of that. This property, I think, is just such an opportunity for the city to have it in its sphere of influence. It doesn't, then you would have control over it. Right now, you don't have that much control. I would take exception to the remark that was made that Measure J was overwhelmingly passed. It was not, it was very slim margin. I also take a little bit of offense against somebody wanting to improve their property or sell their property when we've done so much with Watson Ranch and Terry McGrath making a lot of money. I support Watson Ranch, but I think, you know, we've got to think about people that have property, what are they able to do with it? So for those reasons, you know, I, I just kind of have a tongue in cheek. But I fully support a letter putting this property in the sphere of influence of the city. I think it's a right choice. I think it is tremendous opportunities, and I hope that the council will look. I know there's a lot of people here about Measure J, and I can appreciate that. Measure J was a couple of years ago, this is a new day today. And I think that it's really in the best interest of the city to do that. I also don't quite understand why people think that this would affect the wetlands. Maybe I'm naive and don't know that, and maybe somebody can explain that. But I don't think it's going to ruin the wetlands. So, and I, I support the wetlands because it's a nice place to walk. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you, Joan.
Sophie Bourgeon.
There we go. She was fast. I couldn't make it in time. Anyway, my name is Sophie. Good evening, I know it's really late, but I'll be really fast. I've been here for five years, right in American Canyon, I have five kids. I love the wetlands edge, we walk through that, we always have our coffee morning social, and I never get to walk that far wherever the location is trying to be changed, I think. Correct me if I'm wrong. But a landowner has a right to do whatever he wants with his, with his land. Okay. And I do want to see different things, not housing, but I want some opportunities for my kids to stay in American Canyon, have a job opportunity in American Canyon. If you're going to develop something that would benefit our young children to stay in the city instead of going out of the city to get a job or something else, I'm, I'm really open to have that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophie. Looking in a room to see any other speakers? Just identify your, identify yourself when you get to the podium.
Hi, my name is Debbie Runkie. I have not lived in American Canyon as long as the front row, but I've been here for 40 years. Raised my family here. I, I'm going to just reiterate everything everybody else said. Measure J was voted on, maybe not overwhelmingly, but it was defeated. I would like to see the newly elected members, as well as the longtime people, support that. I walk the wetlands at least four times a week. I have pictures on my phone of the bald eagles I just saw, 15 jackrabbits that crossed my path last week, gold eagles, falcons, all kinds of wildlife. I don't need to see another warehouse butting up against that property. And like was said by other people, it is going to affect, that is going to be a flooded zone in my lifetime, probably. There is a buffer there. And, and I appreciate having other businesses there. I appreciate having other businesses there for people to work at.
Debbie, just for a second, I'm going to give you a time back. Let's be respectful, because I'm gonna tell you, I've watched about maybe 10 people earlier speak and no one interrupted. The last two speakers have been interrupted. Let's be respectful to the speaker, just like the speaker was respectful to each one of you that spoke up there.
And trust me, I held my tongue all night.
I appreciate that, Debbie. Debbie, back to us.
So I, I appreciate wanting other businesses here. My kids can't afford to live here, they, they don't live in the state anymore. I don't think your kids are going to want to work at the warehouses, which is what's going to end up on that property. It's not going to be much else.
Focus on us. Thank you.
And I, and I sympathize with the gentleman who's trying to get rid of his property. It's not arable land for, for grapes. There's so many things here, but I would just like you to back up the fact that we defeated Measure J, and we don't need more warehouses and more commercial property in one of the last little spots that we have to enjoy nature out there. That's all.
Thank you, Debbie. Any other speakers? I'm going to close public comment.
No one online.
Okay. We're going to close public comment and return back to the council for further questions or clarifications. But before I go to the council, I kind of want to just get, I've heard people toss around that there was a landslide, or there was a big difference in Measure J, but I believe the facts, if you could correct me. Mr. Hawley, 52% or 48% was the end result of Measure J?
Approximately, yes.
Approximately.
I can pull up the results on my phone if you want more specific.
Okay. And then also, I've heard several people talk about what the, what the, the owner was going to do as far as development. That's not what's, we're voting on tonight. So I'd like for everybody to be clear on what we are voting on tonight. It has nothing to do with what he plans on putting there, it's an application. So keep that in mind as well. I received approximately 30 emails, and, and I read them all. And, and I can appreciate someone sharing their opinion, but the insults that were given toward the council about us being idiots and, and not being able to understand what's going on in the city, uncalled for. Respect's a two-way street. If you want to be respected, provide respect. And I say that to everybody who is pro or con against this application that we're about to make a decision on tonight. And with that said, I'd like to bring it back to the council to find out any comments or concerns or emotion. Councilmember Cruz.
Thank you, Mayor Washington. I do have a question for our city attorney. Does this area fall under SEQA?
Reiterating what's in the staff report, the request before the council does not involve any city action, either ministerial, meaning like a building permit, or discretionary, meaning like a subdivision map or zone change. It's a request by a landowner with respect to a proceeding before another governmental agency, LAFCO, that has a very set rules of procedure, both affecting substance for what it does, change boundaries. The request is support an application by a landowner for a sphere of influence change. A sphere of influence doesn't require annexation. Affected property can be in multiple spheres of influence. So you're not taking any city action. The rule under SEQA is if you take the first step toward development, then it's subject to SEQA review. You aren't taking anything other than expressing your opinion as the council for an application by a landowner before another government agency. SEQA's not involved in this issue or request tonight.
Thank you, Attorney Ross. Another question. So what I understand is that this is a request for a letter of support, as Manager Hawley expressed, a symbolic gesture. We are not, in essence, voting to say, hey, or agreeing to have warehouses built, housing built. For all you know, Mr. Gilbrus could say, hey, I want to build a conservatory ecology center Part II. I don't know. We just don't know. So all of these things have to move forward with LAFCO and even through us collectively. So this is just the beginning. We're not saying like we're opening up the floodgates, say, hey, we're going to have all kinds of industrial or warehouse or whatnot. I don't think that's what's happening today. We're just basically saying, hey, we're already providing water sewage, and fire district is, is part of that. We're providing services throughout the city. Now we're just asking if that would be incorporated as a sphere into the sphere of influence as, as Ms. Bennett mentioned, just give us more control over this, this particular piece of land. That's all I've got. For other council members, if you guys have anything else to add to that?
Any additional statements? Vice Mayor?
Yes. I've listened to everything that's been said and went through the history of American Canyon. For me, the bottom line in this particular situation is that I think this is a premature action. I am not necessarily opposed to annexing this parcel in. I do recognize that it's surrounded on two sides by the city, but if you look at it, it's also surrounded by two sides by open space and wetlands. I am concerned about sea level rise, I am concerned about open space protection, and I think it's a premature act for two reasons. Number one, I don't understand, basically, the rationale, as I understood, LAFCO said no to the original because you can't be brought into the city if your urban limit line doesn't include you. In effect, you amend the urban limit line and then presumably move with a sphere of influence. We haven't amended the urban limit line, so in my mind, LAFCO should come back with the same conclusion. Once you modify the urban limit line, then you can move forward. So until that discussion is addressed, and it's as far as five years, 2030, it could start sooner than that. I, I don't have an issue with revisiting the urban limit line sooner than 2030. But in my mind, that has to be addressed first before we start talking about changing boundaries. The second reason is a little more nuanced. When you start down the path of saying it's just a letter of support, it's just a sphere of influence, it's not an annexation, it's not a development, you are still beginning to create expectations. And we don't know what those expectations are. We don't know what the city or the county want to do with it. We don't even know what the property owner wants to do with it. We know from Measure J that it cannot all be industrial because the voters said no. And yes, Measure J can be changed, but it can only be changed with another vote of the voters. So unless we're looking at, you know, son of Measure J and another campaign, it is essentially, for me, instructive to say, it isn't all industrial. What else could it be? I don't know. I've heard about grants that could be pursued to acquire it and keep it as open space. I know that anytime the council changes or rezones land or brings land into the city, we are creating an incredible economic opportunity for the property owner. And I don't fully understand community benefit agreements, and I do think we've got to bring that topic back for some education on the part of the council. But as I interpreted it, it's kind of like if we're going to create value, the community gets something from it. So in my head, before we move forward on looking at bringing this into the city, there has to be some clear understanding of what the property's going to be. If, if people out there want to pursue grants to finance the acquisition as open space, some or all of it is open space, that would be great. That's something we ought to encourage. But I believe we've got to be clear on what we want to do with that parcel before we start walking down the path of bringing it into the city. If we don't have a clear understanding from the get-go, there's going to be confusion. The property owner's going to expect a lot more probably than what we or the community want to offer. And that misunderstanding will only be more difficult. So for me, it's all premature. I'm not necessarily opposed to bringing it into the city, but I am opposed with trying to move it this quickly, this fast, with so many issues that are unresolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else?
Yeah, thank you.
Representative Oral.
I have a couple of clarifying questions, and the city manager and the city attorney can help me out here. Just for my benefit and probably the public's too, what does this, how does this letter of support differ from actual Measure J? Like, Measure J was an annexation to build, was that also to bring it into the limit line, or what was that exactly?
I'll go first, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
So Measure J did a couple of things. Measure J changed, proposed to change the ULL, the location of that urban limit line that was created by the city and the county. It proposed to create the urban limit line that would move around this property and include this property inside the ULL. The second thing that Measure J proposed to do is to apply what we call pre-zoning. So that's land not in the city limits, but has a zoning designation to it. And that's one of the things that LAFCO identified as, is lacking. So those were the two things that were really in Measure J, and I want to add those.
I think you've got to look at the action that's requested again.
I don't care about the action tonight, I just want to know what, what was Measure J?
Understood, but, you know, LAFCO covers different issues than Measure J. Measure J covers land use, and LAFCO has jurisdiction, actually as an agency of the state, to set borders. And one of the aspects of a border determination in LAFCO is a progressive analysis of the extension of governmental services while preserving prime agricultural land, two inherent purposes. The landowner is engaged in another forum, another branch of government, and wants to amend the sphere of influence of the city. There's no requirement in LAFCO law that there be any change of organization after a sphere of influence. All it is, is a statement that government services could most efficiently be provided to that area. So to be most hopeful, they're two different actions. LAFCO could proceed, LAFCO could run into a problem in going with a change of organization, which would be the actual boundary movement because of the prohibition of Measure J. But LAFCO has no jurisdiction over land use. So they're two separate buckets.
Okay. If, if we did nothing, it remains in the county, correct?
Right now.
Somebody, somebody came up on stage and said that we automatically get it in 2030. I don't believe that's true.
No.
It's just an opportunity to negotiate that ULL, correct?
The ULL expires, the constraints that were, that you agreed with, with the county, expire, right? You know, there, you can take all kinds of actions of equal dignity, there could be a referendum, you know, the council could initiate another initiative, you can make law.
So in 2030, the ULL agreement expires, but no land changes hands at that time, right? So it is not an automatic thing, right? I just want to make that clear, because that, that was stated, that it'll come to us in 2030.
No.
No, it'll have to go through that sort of same LAFCO sphere of influence.
Exactly.
Letter and campaign.
They are the agency that moves boundary lines, is another way of looking at it.
And so if we did nothing, and 2030 showed up, that land would
And so if we did nothing and 2030 showed up, that land would remain in the county.
It would remain unincorporated.
And then the county could then do what they wanted with that land if they wanted to.
The county would still have land use control over that, that area.
And the city wouldn't have any control over that.
Other than participating in the regulatory aspects of land use, general plan of the county, designations, whatever their zoning is for it. And if any proceedings went forward, city would have the right to participate in those, as would any citizen.
Yeah, and so I think that word "control" is a big thing, and this is where I disagree with Vice Mayor Joseph. It's like, it's the control of what I'm after and not the county's control, or the city should be in control. It's closest to us. Now, if we look at the LAFCO rules and laws and the services that we provide, fire and water, you know, I sit on the LAFCO board. Those services is an orderly growth of the city to come into our jurisdiction. It makes sense. I think you heard it from the land use attorney tonight. The developer said if you put sixty attorneys on it, and I think our attorney would agree, it's kind of surrounded by, it's an orderly growth. There was a word that Mr. Ross used, and it was prime agricultural land. It does not seem to be prime at this time. So, you know, he, I look at that land, and I, and I went out there today. And I've been out there a few times. And so for those of you that don't know me, and I think there's a lot of people visiting in this room. This is the first time here. I moved to American Canyon in 2005. My first role before I met anybody was to be on the Open Space Advisory Committee. We opened up the Noel Preserve, and we eventually opened up the wetlands that you are joining today. That was my job. That was my role, you know. And Nance and Barry and others have been carrying that on for a long time. I'm a founding member of the Open Space, Lifetime founding ma- member of the American Canyon and Community Parks Foundation. We've donated and given thousands of dollars to the Ecology Center. We've raised funds there. My wife works at the Parks Foundation right now. We get it. I'm out there all the time, walking and seeing stuff. And so this morning, knowing that, how important this was to the community, I drove out there after I dropped my daughter off at school, and I went to go look at the land and kind of see the edge of John Oswald Way. It comes on Oswald, and then I went down to Green Island. And I, uh, the, Mr. Gilbreth talked about that small piece of land, and I think I went, it's right by Copart, and I kind of looked at it. And it was beautiful, honestly, but it was also pretty far away from the wetlands as well. Actually, it was from the river. It doesn't touch the wetlands, except for those wetlands that are down there. Now, listen. I get all the environmental concerns, and I want to see that area respected and preserved. But I think there's, I don't know if I have the control over that right now. I don't know if I will have control over that in the future if I give it to the county. I think we know better than anybody else what is possible for that. And I'm actually kind of disappointed in the app, in the, um, Mr. Gilbreth, uh, to, this evening because to me, this isn't about development. I would love to have a negotiation of what that might be like, whether it be a conservation easement, or we go find this funding in dollars so that he is satisfied as a landlord and investor. And if he's not, then what do you want to put there? And then let's trade, and let's talk about what could be possibly put there. This is the last piece bigger land here in American Canyon, and I want to be able to use it wisely. Is there, there's, I was looking at it today, and last week, this city council, um, kind of went in emergency mode because soccer and baseball were fighting for fields. Is there a possibility to put something out there that sort of acts as a mitigation point for where we can use it, but also respect what's out there in terms of open space? We had a citizen come up, talk about what she could do for her kids. There's a lot of stuff that we can think about, but I can't think about it if it's not in the control of the city. And that's why I will vote today for putting that, recommending just a letter of in- influence. Listen, the developer, the property owner, has a five to 10-year road a hoe here. But we have to have those conversations for that. And I think we can protect it and make it something well if we put it in, in our hands.
Any additional statements, comments, or motion?
Uh, yeah. If there are no other statements, and I'm supportive of this too, I'd like to make a motion of a recommendation to adopt a minute order authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of support for a landlord application to LAFCO for the expansion of American Canyon's sphere of influence to include the 1661 Green Island Road property.
I'll second.
We have a second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brando Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Melissa Lamatina?
Yes.
Councilmember David Oro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mark Joseph?
No.
And Mayor Pierre Washington?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Moving on to management and staff oral reports.
Given the time, Mayor, I think we'll, uh, do those next time.
Okay.
I think we're good.
That's fair. That's fair. Let's see, let's move on to our mayor and council committee reports. We still, we're still in order. Excuse me. I know you, people are leaving. If you leave quietly, we still are, are in session. And we're now moving to, uh, our mayor and council committee reports. We'll start with you, Vice Mayor Joseph.
For the sake of time, whatever's there is all I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Oral?
Same.
Councilmember Lamatina?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Cruz?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to report something. No, just something. Little League was a good turnout this last weekend. We were proud to, to enjoy the young, young people out there in Little League. I took advantage of Little League when I was a kid as well. And I also want to give props to our city manager and our, um, city parks director, Ali Kia, for spending the whole day at American Canyon High School, uh, talking about the state of the city. So thank you. Thank you very much for doing that. For future agenda items, anyone has future agenda items?
Yeah, I think we talked, we had a presentation from the community leaders, statement of support for, um, I'm losing it. It's late. The community leaders. Communities. Yeah. I would like to see that come back, please.
I would agree.
What I have, I'd like to bring up a request that the Phil Am Club has brought to my attention, where they're requesting to have the Napa Junction Community Center for a Filipino consultant, or consulate on July 12th. And they're requesting to have the rental be waived. I'd like to support that, and I'd like to see if the council will support me in that, uh, request as well.
I, I would support it.
Yeah, I would support it, but I think it has to come back to council, right?
Yeah, we're talking about future agenda items. So this is, uh, the council agreeing to hear a future agenda item on a fee waiver. Just real quickly, I don't have it in my authority to waive fees generally, and especially ones of a diplomatic nature. So we thought I would bring it back to you all, and even though it's a relatively modest monetary amount, I don't have it in my authority to just waive fees.
Okay, thank you. I just, I, I know that typically we do it for nonprofit type, type organizations. This is a non, not a nonprofit organization. But I, but I did want to support the Phil Am in that request.
Yeah.
So thank you. With that said, if nobody else is going to report anything, we have adjourned. Our weekend adjourned from tonight. Our business has been complete. Good night in American Canyon.